Mr. Mayor, Honorable Council Members and all who are gathered here. Let us pray for all the people of God according to their needs. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you provide the community of Los Banos, the many resources that we are blessed with here to grow crops, livestock, and to raise our families. Your servant Paul wrote in Romans saying, "Government authorities are servants for your good." There is no authority except from you, and authority is instituted by you, and we should respect such authority. Let all who come before the council this evening approach in a manner of respect and civility. We pray your Spirit fill all public servants, from our mayor and council to the city manager and all who work with them. Give them the wisdom and insight necessary to serve this community, guide their decisions to allow Los Banos to fulfill its potential as a healthy and caring community for all who live here. Jesus taught us how we care for the least is how we care for you. Paul told us, "We who are strong ought to bear with the failings of the weak and not to please ourselves. Each of us should please his neighbor for his good to build him up." May the God of hope fill you with joy and peace to trust in him that you may overflow with hope by the power of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order at 6:02, and if I could have Commander Meldon lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, if I can get a roll call? Here, and we have a quorum. Item four, consideration and approval of the agenda. Councilmember Jones?
Sub moved.
I get a second. Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Let's move on to... Move on to presentations. Item five. So this first one is Certificate of Recognition presented to Christie McCammon, Housing Program Manager, Community and Economic Development Department, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the City of Los Banos for being named Employee of the Month for May 2023. Stacy, do you want to accept on her behalf? Do I have people from Dutch Bros here? More importantly, did you bring coffee? No. Okay. You'll take it. All right. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to Dutch Bros of Los Banos in appreciation for the donation of $4,543 to the youth recreation sports programs for the City of Los Banos. It's Mr. Roy Todd here. All right, Roy, a certificate of recognition presented to Arco AM PM Los Banos in recognition of being named Recycler of the Year for 2022 for adopting all SB 1383 requirements, being an active participant in separating their waste materials, and for assisting the City of Los Banos in meeting diversion goals. So thank you so much, Roy.
I'm from Mid Valley disposal. I'm Lori, I'm your second program manager. This is our award that we like to recognize you with as well, a little gift giveaway. So we just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Mid Valley as well.
All right, let's move on to item six, the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chambers information table. This time I'd like to invite the public to come up, and just a reminder to please silence your cell phones.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor, City Council, City Management. I'm here again on behalf of Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. Real quickly, the chamber added four new members this past two weeks. Sally Maybell, Creation, Los Banos Roofing, Kelly Spin Laundry, and Delicioso Bakery. We just had our Dad's Day Out event, Street Festival that took place this past Saturday. We wanted to... The chamber wanted to thank the City of Los Banos, the Los Banos community, and the sponsors. Our sponsors this year were the two Arco AM PMs in Los Banos, Beverage House and Sutter Memorial Hospital. Upcoming June mixer, we have on June 29th, so that's not tomorrow, Thursday, but a week from Thursday, we're going to be at Mission de Oro at 5:30. I think that would be a great one for all you folks to attend. They always put on a good presentation there. Next, under upcoming events, July 8th, the Tomato Festival will take place. That's a Saturday, runs from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Best to just probably visit the Tomato Festival Facebook page to see more on the food vendors attending and the local attractions that will be there that day. On the July mixer, we will be partnering with the Los Banos Downtown Association. So the chamber and the Downtown Association will be meeting at Caldwell Banker Real Estate on East Pacheco near 7th. Next, the chamber presently working very closely with Merced County to find new workshops and what we refer to as lunch and learns to help chamber members with solving business problems and situations. If you're a business and currently needing more information on certain issues and would like to see a workshop or seminar scheduled, please contact the chamber office. Also, the chamber is promoting HR hotlines which help local business owners with HR or business questions that are answered by certified HR consultants. Basically, it comes down to an 800 number, which is totally free service to businesses. Again, for more information, go to the chamber website or social media pages. Finally, the chamber office, we currently have grocery grab tickets that are a fundraiser for the Los Banos VFW and the Los Banos American Legion fundraising efforts. So that's my report for this time.
I would just like to invite everybody to come out to Dutch Brothers next Friday, June 30th. They will be doing a fundraiser, and a portion of the proceeds will be going to the fire department, so we hope to see you guys out there.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I want to talk about the animal shelter again. I think that many people would be surprised to know that our shelter has a 93% save rate. It has been known as a high-kill shelter for many decades. I recently found out that the only reason our shelter has that 93% save rate or sent-to-rescue rate is because the City of Los Banos has been blessed with some people from other cities who have spent countless hours and unimaginable amounts of their own personal money to pull animals from the Los Banos shelter and transport them to other towns where they can be fostered by animal rescue groups until they are adopted into loving homes. For dogs, I found out that in just the last two years, the kill rate at our shelter has gone from an average of three to five per week to a total of five adoptable dogs who lost their lives in the last two years, five over two years' time with the help of these people. And cats have fared better also, with many going to rescue, and even our community cats, such as the feral cats, are getting a second chance as they all deserve. This incredible change has been due to the work of only a handful of people. I know one of those people are here tonight and will be speaking. Nancy Klein, who lives over an hour away, has personally pulled about 400 dogs from the Los Banos shelter and had them transported to rescue organizations, sometimes several states away. She has not only saved their lives, but she has ensured that their lives will be spent without cruelty or abandonment forevermore. The other person who specializes in rescuing cats is Levi Fistori. Levi runs an organization called Feral Freedom, and he also lives over an hour away. These two people are experienced animal rescue organizers with years on the job, but to call it a job is inaccurate. They have dedicated their lives to being animal advocates and shelter rescue administrators without being paid for their work. I would ask that this city council provide funding for these people who specialize in the field of animal shelter and rescue. It is only because of these people that our shelter no longer has the undesirable and outdated title of being a high-kill shelter in the Central Valley. It's not 1980 anymore. I think we all want a better image for Las... for Los Banos, don't we? Please add a line in this year's budget to compensate these people from out of town for helping us in such an incredible way. I will leave the details for those in the field to determine what that fair compensation to these people should be, but please do something, because saying thank you just isn't enough.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Kristin Santos here, representing the office of Congressman John Duarte. Just wanted to provide an update on what has been an extremely busy past few weeks in Washington, D.C. When Congressman Duarte said he voted no on HR2 because he wanted real bipartisan solutions for immigration reform, he meant it. He's proud to co-sponsor the Dignity Act with Republican Congresswoman Maria Salazar of Florida and Democratic Congresswoman Veronica Escobar of Texas. The Dignity Act would be the first major bipartisan immigration bill proposed in over a decade. It would make our country safer by providing $25 billion to fully secure our border. It would provide a dignified solution for undocumented immigrants living in the United States and would bring working families in the valley out of the shadows. It would establish the dignity program, a practical solution for undocumented immigrants who have been in the United States for more than five years, and recipients would be offered a chance to work, get right with the law, and eventually earn legal permanent residence. There'd be two options after successful completion of this program, dignity status, which would provide full work authorization, the ability to live in the United States, and travel authorization outside the United States, which would be followed by redemption program, contingent on completion of the seven-year dignity program. It would offer recipients a chance to redeem themselves and earn permanent legal status, otherwise known as a green card. You'd be required to learn English, learn United States civics, and contribute to the local community either through community service or an additional $5,000 in restitution payments over that period of a number of years. And it would create a new American Worker Fund using restitution payments from these programs to help provide workforce training, upskilling, and education for unemployed American workers. It'd also create a certified agricultural worker program where foreign workers could apply for lawful permanent residence after successfully maintaining eight years of the status, or four years of the status plus 10 years of previous agricultural work experience in addition to making these restitution payments and paying all back taxes. Congressman Duarte also joined both parties to introduce the American Dream and Promise Act, a bill that seeks to fix the immigration issues facing Dreamers in the 13th District. As a California native and a farmer, he knows Dreamers who play a critical role in our communities, and the American Dream and Promise Act would represent an opportunity for us to embrace our values and honor the spirit of the ancestors who built this country. The bipartisan legislation offers a pathway to citizenship for Dreamers who have been here for a period of at least four years and who are brought to the United States as children and have known no other home. They're our neighbors, our friends, our colleagues, and they deserve a chance to live up to their full potential. The congressman's going to continue to work with both Democrats and Republicans to provide practical results for working families in our valley. Regarding our work on the Federal Aviation Administration reauthorization on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, we're excited to see a brand-new bipartisan effort to reform protocols and procedures that have jurisdiction over the Federal Aviation Administration, the FAA. This bill will dramatically reduce the bureaucracy and red tape associated with the FAA, and we are pleased to see it passed without objection out of committee with two of our amendments. The First Amendment would establish a publicly available online portal that would allow the public to submit comments directly to the director of the FAA, and the FAA director would also be required to give an annual report on any findings from this public portal. Our Second Amendment would actually restrict the ability to assert jurisdiction over restricted category aircraft, so this would be Black Hawk helicopters, Shunik helicopters, and other military surplus aircraft, only to the FAA rather than the Forest Service. Now, the Forest Service has been issuing regulations around the operation and maintenance of these aircraft and trying to enforce that civilian organizations operating these aircraft, mainly for the purpose of fighting wildfires out of valley airports, meet military-specified O&M schedules, which is classified information not available to these firefighting organizations and contractors. Our amendment would legislatively stop the Forest Service from asserting this jurisdiction and allow aerial fire suppression companies to continue to operate their aircraft while contracting to Forest Service and give that jurisdiction solely to the FAA. So we're excited to see that streamlined and cut some red tape for firefighters here in the valley, and thank you for your time to provide this report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rhonda Lowe. Tonight, I'm here to remind you, or inform you if you don't already know, of a valuable asset that's available to you as city leaders, your economic development efforts, and really our business community as a whole. I'm proud to be a part of the Small Business Development Center. I always say SBDC, and I know it sounds like alphabet soup after a while, but for the past seven years, I've been a business coach with them, and what I especially like is I'm able to operate as a champion here for SPD C services in Los Banos. We're able to provide our no-cost services through state and federal funding from the SBA and the California Governor's Office of Economic Development, among others. These services include one-on-one counseling with expert advisors, customized training, and various funding options to help small business succeed. As you know, creating a vibrant community does not happen by accident. It's a result of careful planning focused on attracting and nurturing the kinds of businesses that will make it the community that we want it to be. So what is the value of a strong collaboration between the City of Los Banos and SBDC? Working together to support locally-owned businesses help us all, and that means economic growth, and that translates to creating jobs. Community development, because locally-owned businesses are more likely to invest in their community and in the development of their community, and retention of wealth. When money is spent at locally-owned businesses, a larger portion of that money stays in our community. Our job at the SBDC is to provide the resources to help people start their business with the least amount of risk and the most amount of ongoing support to help see them through to success. All of this is at no cost to the City of Los Banos or the entrepreneur. We know starting a business is risky, and it takes far more work than anybody... than most people realize, but that's the value that we bring to the table. Experienced coaches to help them navigate it through to make our community a better place for all of us. I'm excited to be bringing back our startup workshops here in Los Banos, where we'll help them test the feasibility of their idea, because all ideas aren't great ideas, and create a simple business plan, and to learn the steps to start their business legally and successfully here in Los Banos. Our first workshop will be Saturday, July 29th, at the Community Center from 10:00 to 11:30. It is a no-cost workshop, but we do ask for pre-registration, just so that I bring enough materials. You can register at UC Merced SBDC, or you can reach out to me at rhonda lowe consulting at gmail dot com.
Hi, I'm Kathy Uli, a resident of District Four here in Los Banos. Last Thursday, I sent you all an email requesting the creation of an Animal Advisory Commission to be on this next council agenda. Of course, it was really late to be on this council agenda, so naturally I did not expect to see it here, but hopefully it will give you ample time to get it on the next agenda. Los Banos has an Airport Advisory Commission. We have commissions for both Measures H and P. We have a Park and Recreation Commission, a Planning Commission, a Traffic Safety Commission, and a Tree Commission. Los Banos would benefit tremendously by the much-needed addition of the Animal Advisory Commission and bringing on board people in our community with expertise in animal sheltering and rescuing, people who understand rescue dynamics, possibly veterinary care as well. We would be looking at the possibility of implementing progressive animal programs in the city, and the addition of this commission could really move the entire animal scene in Los Banos in a positive direction. And the sooner the commission is formed, the sooner the city can start to reap the benefits of the knowledge of community members that have... the knowledge that they can bring to the table. The time for this commission really is now, and I hope to see it very soon on an agenda. And I heard the mention of a couple of the rescue organizations that are helping our shelter. If anybody would like to donate to them on their own, they are on social media. Levi Fistori is with Feral Freedom, and I... I'm sorry, I don't know who Nancy Klein's rescue is, but I know she is in the room this evening, so perhaps if somebody would like to reach out to her or look her up on social media, that'd be awesome. They are doing amazing work.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Yanez and the council members. My name is Sandra Navarro, and I'm a resident and a homeowner here in Los Banos. So the first thing I'm going to address is the rescue missions, I mean, excuse me, the animal rescue and the problem with the animals. My husband and I were one of the volunteers that helped, and we're working with Levi to catch and release cats. So I'm here to ask for more volunteers. We definitely need volunteers. And what we're doing is the animals are caught, and they are spayed, and they are vaccinated, which they need, and then they are released. And I... The reason why my husband and I are... became volunteers is because we believe that they are spayed, well, they're not going to have more cats or dogs. And so we're hoping that that would help, but we definitely need more volunteers. Now, the second issue is because of the homeless encampments on the rail trail, my husband and I can no longer go out there and try and catch cats in peace. Okay, it's making it very hard. On top of that, when Mr. Furia was mayor, I'm one of the co-founders of Tensix. I don't know if you might have heard of the nonprofit. We addressed Mr. Furia, and we got We Hope from the Bay Area to actually come and tell... to actually come into Los Banos and bring a big trailer with showers and bathrooms, and then Tensix would come in. We partnered up with Salvation Army to feed the homeless once, twice per week. And we did that for a couple of months. I'm not sure what happened. I used to work for California State Parks, so my superintendent, Duke Erbling, he also got involved, and they were awesome. They approved them dumping at California State Parks. But for whatever reason, the City of Los Banos did not do anything about it. So I had a major car accident in 2021, and due to that, we stopped right now with Tensix because of my injuries, and I'm still, I'm still going to therapy because of that. So I've been on both sides. The helper and the victim. I live right in front of the rail trail. And this is my, I believe, fourth, fifth time I addressed Mr. Valata when he was mayor. And he was awesome. He removed all the bushes, because that's what they were using for encampments. And then Mr. Furia, and you know, he immediately removed them from, you know, the residential area. So where they're at now is at the corner of Second and G Street. And it's affecting all the businesses there and all the residents there. I'm not here to complain of the home insecure people or the homeless, because there are people that are truly homeless. You know, for unforeseen circumstances, they become homeless, and I understand that. And we've been there to help. But what I want to address is this. This is no longer a homeless or unsecure home issue. It's people that are lawless that have taken advantage of the laws that have passed to hide under these laws to commit crime. They're right in front of my house, and you don't have to be educated to know when they're selling drugs and they're prostituting girls and they're doing, you know, they're stealing. You know, they steal bikes, and then they change parts. And then, you know, a truck comes by, and you know, they take three, four of them. So you know they're doing illegal activity. So I don't consider, I don't consider these people homeless because the term homeless is somebody that, you know, they want to get reinstated into society. They want to work.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, so I wanted to address that. And it's affecting our whole neighborhood. I can't sleep at night. I mean, it's gotten really, really bad. So I hope that, you know, this takes, I don't, I don't have an answer. But I definitely, we want to work with the City of Los Banos to try and help. I know this is not just going to take the city, but also the residents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, May. Just a quick comment. I work for the Local Imaging Center here in town. Since this homeless encampment has been out there, we have been, you know, stolen our carpets that we have outside. We have these homeless people walking around our parking lot now, looking at vehicles in broad daylight. At one time, my coworker came in through the back office and caught somebody defecating behind our business. The person that did that was told not to come back and not do that, that it was a business. She came back the next day and defecated again and smeared on our door. It was just sickening. So this is going to be a continued problem for what I see, and it's going to cause us some serious problems as far as business goes. So I think it's of grave concern to address that encampment that's across the way. That's all my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballard. I wanted to bring up, because Kathy brought up Measure H, that there's a committee. So I'm asking Mr. Begonia, instead of just me, asking to have a meeting. Like I said, we've only had two since it was passed. I really would appreciate it. Otherwise, boy, we'll never see a quarterly report from the Measure H Committee. Thank you.
Hi. I was here about a month ago. It's regarding the homeless. Let me tell you what's happened since. You guys know that they've burned down our fence. Farmers Insurance just recently reimbursed us for it. They poisoned one of my dogs. The veterinarian confirmed that that's what pretty much killed them. When that happened, we have classic cars in the back. So when that happened, all our doors were opened, and that's still an issue. Here, here's the thing, it's a very, as a concerned citizen, our safety is, is in jeopardy. So let me tell you what happened this past weekend. I had a drug addict. It was obvious he was on meth. He was sweaty, he was very skinny. He came all the way to my front door. My door sits, our house sits pretty far back from the street. He came to the door. It was, I believe it was Saturday morning. We were making breakfast. I had my two-and-a-half-year-old grandson. And by the way, I have several grandchildren, and they're consistently over. They play in our yard all the time. He came to the house. He said his drum went in our backyard, and he was already in position to go through my driveway, to go through our carport, to go through our back patio, to go through our yard, and to go way in the back, because we're on an acre and a half and our fence that they burned is way in the back. And I told him, no, you need to wait here. So I went to get my husband. The guy was sitting in the front, because we have a gated fence, and he was sitting. And every three or four seconds, he was doing this. And it was obvious he was under the influence of a controlled substance. My husband took a while, and he left. When my husband came back, I said, hey, that guy left. But I don't like him here. I don't want these people coming to our house. Did you find his dumb drum? It wasn't a drum, it was a drone with a camera and everything. So I know that they're ripping people off, because they come in our yard all the time, all the time. I called the city. I've left Chief Breezy, is that his name? I guess. I've left him a detailed message that he needs to do something. I left, I believe Sergeant Mendez a message too. I, I've, I've left a couple of voicemails for Christie, whatever her last name is, because she's a housing, or whatever homeless. She hasn't responded, so that tells me either she's extremely busy or I don't matter. One or the other. What happened a couple of days ago? They're taking showers in my front yard. Showers are using our water, coming on our property, and taking showers. They're jumping over our fence, and that's unacceptable. So you know, you guys need to do something. I mean, the fire department is constantly out there, constantly. So at this point, because I'm not getting cooperation from anyone, I don't know if I need to submit or seek a public records request for the fire department, the City of Los Banos, and the police department, because my husband was calling numerous times, telling them, hey, these guys are jumping over our fence. They're, they're, you know, riling our dogs. And the only reason one dog was killed, and I don't know if I told you this or not, was because he was the alpha. So the other dog, because I have German Shepherds, the other dogs didn't go near whatever it was that they gave him. And that's the only reason, thank God, only one dog got killed. You know, or anyway, it doesn't matter. But, I mean, it does matter, but I'm not going to keep harping on that. I need, something has to be done. Those people, and I don't mean this, I mean it with the most respect, they're disgusting. Because like that other lady said, most of them are criminals. Not all of them are down on their luck. They choose to live that lifestyle. And, and, and that's fine. More power to them. When I talk to them, because I went back there, and there's not, I don't, I don't cower very easily, but I can genuinely tell you that I am nervous, and I am scared, and I don't like that feeling. And I don't like them coming on my property at all, especially because I have small children. That's unacceptable to me. So you guys need to do something, because at this point, I'm going to have to look and see what's going on, how many calls have come in. You know, I know that the fire department is involved. They were out there like three times just in the last couple of days, or last night or the night before, I can't recall. You know, what is the police department doing? You know, what is the city doing? Because when I talk to some of those homeless people, they specifically told me that they were told to move from, we're behind rallies and Taco Bell in between the new police building that's going up in the courthouse. They were told to move over by Home Depot. Okay, and then they were told again to move from Home Depot to where we are now. So somebody is calling the shots. So you need to find a location far away from the residents of Los Banos that are in danger because of, a lot of these are criminals. And, and do something. We can't have them back there. It's disgusting. It's a mess. It's an eyesore, you know? And if they're concerned about them not being over by the police department, where the, you know, the new building is going up, then you guys need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Klein. Some of you may recognize me. It's been a while since I've actually been here in person, but I have been watching all of you a couple of times a month from home on these meetings. I wanted to come back here tonight. Obviously, we have a lot of forward progress that's been taking place in regards to the shelter, discussing it, budgeting for it, and bringing the community together for it. And I think it's really important. Again, for those of you that don't know me, either here in the council or watching, again, my name is Nancy. I've been doing rescue work at the Los Banos Shelter now for two years. My experience and my knowledge is pretty deep. I've been doing this for about 10 years, shelter rescue operations. It is true, I don't live in Los Banos, though I must tell you, I feel a part of your community, and not just because of the shelter, but I listen to a lot of your public talk about, whether it's the homeless issue, the new businesses coming into town via presentation or the chamber. I have a lot of your community members that reach out to me for help with their animals. So that said, I wanted to voice my support again for the Animal Commission or Committee. I actually did bring this up four different times in the past year. In March of 2022, I met with the PD, Mr. Mendez, Reyna, and the shelter staff for several hours, and we talked about operations and whatnot here at the City Council last year in June, July, and August. I do think it's an important, important group to put together to help shape and mold what this shelter and the city and the community needs. You know, I don't dare suggest that I should go partake in a fire department committee, because while I appreciate their work and I like firemen, I think the only thing I really know and have learned is from Smokey the Bear. So I would not be a good candidate for that committee, in my opinion. But I do think it is important for the shelter. The other item I wanted to chat about was the million dollars, the focus on vet services. I think that it's going to be really money well-spent. It's needed, it's way overdue. The outside of the building and the building itself is important, but we have to remember even more important is the nucleus, and that's going to be the operations and the culture going forward. I've worked with staff, as you can imagine. We speak many times a week. And so they've been very supportive and helpful as they can, and I appreciate that. The thing I would like to have the committee, or excuse me, the council also consider going forward is a position at the shelter that's a program coordinator. You really need someone who's going to be able to focus not just on rescue efforts, because truthfully, if myself and Levi walked away, things would not be the same. But grant opportunities, opportunities for outreach in the community, education, bringing everybody together. And right now, we've had the city, the police, the shelter, members of the community, members of this audience. I think it's pretty clear the direction we're moving in, and we really need to take some big steps in. So again, I thank you, and I look forward to being part of the continued progress.
Thank you.
Mayor Yanez, council members. Yeah, I'm Mike New. I'm the pastor for St. John's Lutheran Church on Adams. And we're located at the corner of Adams Avenue and Sierra Lane. And it's Sierra Lane that I'd like to discuss for a second here. Across from the driveway for our back parking lot on Sierra Lane, they have built two homes. This construction's been going on for over two years now. And it's been interesting how they've done this construction. They put in the foundation, built the house, and then decided they needed to put in the underground utilities. That, the sewage was put in almost a year ago. We still have a channel running down the middle of Sierra Lane there that was, had a temporary fill in it. And my understanding is that the city has been trying for over eight months to get the developers of this property to complete the paving over it. And I want to thank Mr. Thanh, and I want to thank Mr. Piñero. We wrote letters, both the church and some of the neighbors a couple of weeks ago. And within a week, we had a crew from the city out there putting more temporary fill in it. As I understand it, about four truckloads of asphalt to fill this in, because it was at a point where it was close to six inches deep. It was hazardous for my members to come to church. That's where our, most of our disabled park back there. And it's gotten very hazardous to be able to drive back there. Now it's filled over, but you can tell that it's temporary. They weren't able, the city is not normally paving contractors, so they don't have rolling equipment to go over it, I was told. So the truck was going back and forth, trying to compact the asphalt. And I can tell you, the Mid Valley Disposal people are doing a better job of it, because they're getting it packed down. But I don't know what the process is for the planning department. And we're looking at how this house was developed, but it seems everything that was done on this house was backwards. And they should have addressed all the underground utilities initially rather than after the fact. So I would ask that the Public Works, the Planning Department, take a look at other projects like this and see if they can avoid having a situation like we've been experiencing on Sierra Lane. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. Just really a quick update, actually. Fourth of July celebration is right around the corner, so it'll be Saturday, July 1. Carnival rides will start at 2:00 PM. Tickets for the Carnival rides will be sold in advance at the Downtown Association, and you could also find them at Fun Zone and La Papusa Loca. And wristband vouchers will be available online as well on our website, www.downtownlosbanas.com. And if you purchase them online, actually, on our website, I will take another $5 off for, so you can get them for $25. So overall, in person, they're $30. The day of, they'll be 35. So it is a free event for the community. Start time will be at 4:00 PM. And the OGs band from 4:00 to 6:00. Then you have the flag-raising ceremony with my cues at 6:00 PM. from 4 to 6, then you have the flag raising ceremony with my cues at 6:00 PM. So then 6:15, Ryan San Pedro, a female student at Pacheco High, will be singing the National Anthem. And so Sacred Fire Band will proceed at 6:45 to 8:45. So we'll be having a beer garden, food vendors, and arts and crafts. Ronnie will be doing a beautiful rainforest display, and the fireworks show will be at 9:30. So we would like to thank our sponsors, Morning Star, Young's Air Conditioning, Center Health, Mid Valley, and Jams at 209. And of course, additional sponsors would be appreciated. Our fireworks booth will be at Carl's Jr. next to Walmart at 1551 West Pacheco Boulevard from June 28th through July 4th. And thank you for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff, members of the public. Today I want to talk about a couple items. I've been out of the loop for a little bit, but I think these items are important to be brought up so that, again, they aren't not forgotten, and they're important for proper governance and good practices for the city. This year, in deviation of previous years, and in contrast to good governance practices, the budget workshop was abandoned. The budget workshop allowed for a longer period of time for the public to be informed as to the proposed expenditures, new items, and generally allowed for proper oversight of taxpayer funds. This year, the budget is being presented and voted on with very limited time for public input and review. The budget workshop also provided an opportunity to see what the various council members viewed as spending priorities. The current budget seems to have been created with the express purpose of eliminating this very important element. Instead, spending projects were introduced away from the public view and in private meetings. This is contrary to good governance and denies the people the proper oversight. This budget proposes the creation of new senior-level positions with extremely high salaries. What is the justification for an assistant city manager? How will that city manager be selected? What are his or her rules and duties? I would suggest that instead of spending capital and taxpayer funds on creating a top-heavy administration, they wish to use these monies to fund line staff in road repair, road maintenance, especially at the animal shelter. We need more personnel at the line staff level who will actually be doing the work, not at the upper administrative levels. Again, this is what money's all being spent, in light of the fact that we are one of the poorest counties in California. Many of our residents work in two or three jobs, just to make ends meet, put food on the table. They are at or below the poverty level, yet we're spending and creating six-digit positions with no justification, not that I know of. Again, last year, we had a budget workshop, it began in May, there was a lot of back-and-forth questions, various proposals, recommendations. There was a very good and robust conversation about how to spend the taxpayers' money. We had a very good presentation by the finance committee, which started on June 1st, and it, the budget wasn't voted on until June 30th. And it was very good, very detailed. We had none of that this year. And again, that goes against good governance and oversight. Another area that I have to address is the council's wasteful decision not to utilize the recruitment process in the city manager, in hiring of the city manager. The recruitment firm had presented numerous highly qualified candidates, yet the city decided not to follow prudent hiring processes and hired a personal friend. In fact, paying him nearly $2 million out of the general fund. This was all done in direct defiance and against legal council's advice, and against the Indian Harbor Insurance, the city's insurance company. This is an email from Mr. Justice Michael, from Indian Harbor Insurance Company. Indian Harbor Insurance Company understands from the below email that the City of Los Banos, the name insured, has extended an offer of $1.8 million to claimant. Pursuant to Section F2 of the policy, given the offer was made outside of the defense council's recommendation and without Indian Harbor Insurance Company's approval, the settlement amount, if accepted, will be the sole obligation of the name insured, i.e. the City of Los Banos. In short, Indian Harbor will not contribute towards any settlement amounts made outside of the defense council's recommendation and without our consent. Moreover, the name insured applicable $50,000 retention will remain uneroded by such settlements and payments. Please send a copy of this email to all board members of the named insured CCME. So each one of you had notice of this, each one of you knew that you were acting outside of legal counsel, and each one of you knew that you were putting the city and yourselves in legal jeopardy. Because again, you went outside of a legal counsel. Making these decisions in a vacuum only serves to disenfranchise the residents and creates the perception that there is an inner group who make all the decisions. Please take some time, understand your roles as elected members of this body, understand that you're responsible to all the residents of the City of Los Banos. People work very hard for their money, the taxes they paid into should be looked at, and decisions made on those expenses, decided upon in an open forum with everyone involved, with as much time as possible for individuals to opine as to what should be the priorities for the city.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Again, this is only to ask for proper accountability and oversight. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public forum? Do we have any write-in comments?
I've received quite a few comments regarding the animal shelter, so I'm just going to read through them. Dear City Clerk, please, please kindly help our animal shelter, it needs the city help. We desperately need an animal advisory board to oversee our shelter. We desperately need a free or low-cost spay neuter. We need an emergency shelter vet. We need free TNR to stop the feral cat overpopulation. Regards, B. Jop. To whom it may concern, hello, my name is Melissa Lawson, I've been rescuing animals for 25 years. I foster neonatal kittens and mother cats for various rescue organizations around the Bay Area. Last year, I took in a litter of kittens from a rescue that were from the Los Banos Animal Shelter. I truly wish I could be at this meeting tonight, but I'm bottle-feeding a litter of kittens and could not make the drive from Watsonville. I want everyone to know that the shelter and the community of Los Banos need and deserve to have low spay and neuter options. A healthy shelter requires a veterinary staff that can assist companion animals when needed in an emergency. TNR is the only way to combat this serious problem of companion animal overpopulation. There is a science to back the concept of TNR and its successes. Los Banos needs TNR to alleviate the needless suffering of animals that we are responsible for as a community. Finally, an animal advisory board with members who care about the health and welfare of the animals in the Los Banos Animal Shelter is critical to the future of all communities surrounding Los Banos. We are all in this together and need to work alongside each other now to ensure a future where suffering is not an option for the animals and our care. Thank you so much for listening. Dear City of Los Banos, I hope this email finds you well. I am writing to you on behalf of concerned citizens and animal lovers within our community to bring attention to some urgent matters regarding our local animal shelter. The following requests are crucial for the welfare of our animals and the well-being of our community. One, affordable spay neuter programs, that is essential to implement. A free or low-cost spay neuter program within our community. By making this service more accessible, we can effectively reduce the number of homeless and stray animals, curbing overpopulation issues. Such programs have proven to be successful in other cities, promoting responsible pet ownership and minimizing the burden of our animal shelter. Two, emergency shelter veterinary services. In times of crisis or emergencies, we urgently require the presence of a dedicated shelter veterinarian. An on-call or readily available emergency shelter vet would ensure that animals in distress receive immediate medical attention and care. This veterinary professional would be equipped to handle a wide range of medical situations and provide necessary treatment to safeguard the health of our shelter animals. Three, free tray neuter return program to address the issue of feral cat overpopulation, we kindly request the implementation of free trap neuter return program. This program would facilitate the humane trapping sterilization and the subsequent release of feral cats back into their original habitat. By doing so, we can effectively manage the feral cat population, prevent and spread of diseases, and improve the overall well-being of these animals. We understand the challenges and constraints faced by the city administration, but we firmly believe that these requests are vital for the improvement of our animal shelter and the betterment of our community. By taking proactive measures, we can create a safer, healthier environment for our animals and work towards being compassionate and responsible society. We kindly request your attention and support in addressing these urgent matters, or cooperation in establishing an animal advisory board, providing affordable spay neuter programs, ensuring emergency shelter, veterinary services, and initiating a free TNR program would be greatly appreciated by the residents of Los Banos. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to positive changes that will enhance the lives of animals in our community. Sincerely, Jennifer Zo. My name is Isabel Costa, I am not able to be there in person, so I am writing this email in order to show my support. Los Banos has grown increasingly for the last 40 years. Residential homes have been built to an extreme. New commercial businesses have been open to accommodate its residents and the many travelers passing town. A new middle school and high school have been built to provide the much-needed education to all its residents' children. The town growth is wonderful, but with growth, there are additional responsibilities, cares, concerns that need attending to. One of the such responsibilities are the many domesticated pets that have been added to the residential community. The Los Banos Animal Shelter needs support in all of the capacities of service and an animal shelter can, should provide for its community and its pets. The capacity to hold more animals, low-cost vaccination clinic, low-cost spay and neuter clinic, emergency services, et cetera. These are just to name a few of their needs. Please support the Los Banos Animal Shelter growth with all the many services needed to the community's residents and their pets. Thank you for your time. To whom it may concern, my name is Sharon Ungerfeld, and I reside in San Jose. I recently adopted a beautiful kitten named Juniper from Squitch Kittens in Santa Clara. Jupiter came from the Los Banos Animal Shelter. After adopting her, I began following the Los Banos Animal Shelter in seeing the immense need for change at the shelter. While it immediately struck me is the immense influx of animal delay in the shelter. Many of these animals are repopulating, come in sick, scared, or abandoned. This is not okay. Why are so many animals being found and brought into this shelter that doesn't have the resources to support him? Why does this shelter not have resources to care for these animals? This is not okay. Those with power must make change and not leave it to the dedicated staff, volunteers, and rescues to save these animals. Compassionate rescue organizations like Squitch Kittens take on the responsibility of so many of these animals, giving them veterinary care and spay and neutering, fostering them, and so much more. The Los Banos Animal Shelter needs an emergency veterinarian, free or low-cost spay neutering, free TNR to prevent overpopulation of feral cats, and the attention of the animal advisory board. Please care about these beautiful animals like my Jupiter, who only had a chance because of this amazing shelter and rescue organization and their unsupported efforts. Ignoring these needs is animal cruelty. Thank you for your time. Hello, I am reaching out to urge you to please consider providing more funding and support to the Los Banos Animal Control. My family lives there, so I am often there and go, and got my own dog from the shelter. My dog had an eye infection when she was brought into the shelter and had to be treated for ulcers due to the lack of proper treatment during my stay hold. The staff there are amazing and did their best to care for her. But this highlights the need for a vet on staff. In my years of working with rescue, we have also pulled many cats from there. The contrast between Los Banos and even the poorest city shelter is shocking. No vet on staff to perform neuters before adoption almost guarantees the shelter's overpopulation issues to keep getting worse, just as important would be offering a low-cost neuter option to residents. This funding would be massive benefit to Los Banos, and it's, and is absolutely necessary for the welfare of animals that go into the shelter. Would be a huge age to low-income pet owners and a right step in decreasing pet overpopulation and the need to euthanize for space. Best regards, Anastasia Peterson. I live in San Jose, and for years I've, I supported the Los Banos Shelter by transporting dogs and cats out, funding and by meeting the needs of the animals once they arrive at rescue. Los Banos is a large enough community that this shelter should have more funding and a lot more attention from the community. Things that need to happen that could be supported and funded by the community are advisory board to oversee the shelter, low-cost spay neuter services, any emergency shelter vet, TNR services to stop the feral cat population. Please consider these needs when providing funding for the shelter. Thank you, Kathy Blong. Greetings, I do occasionally TNR and have been to the Los Banos Animal Shelter a time or two, it is my understanding that they need the following. An animal advisory board to oversee the shelter, a free or low-cost spay neuter, an emergency shelter vet, a free TNR to stop the feral cat overpopulation. These things are not a luxury, they are basic items that need to be compassionate. Please help us help these animals that have done nothing wrong. Thank you, Keith Blong. I have rescued animals from Los Banos Shelter for over 20 years. The animal shelter desperately needs an animal advisory board, emergency vet, it is inhumane to have sick and injured animals sit in a kennel without attention. We need low-cost spay and neuter so the animal population doesn't continue to grow. Free TNR to keep the feral cat population under control. The shelter has an amazing group of employees and volunteers that work tirelessly to save animals on a daily basis, but they need support. Thank you, Valerie Hatfield, Grateful Dogs Rescue, Tony's Kitten Rescue, Andrea's Dream Rescue. My name is Angela Curtis, and I have lived in Los Banos since 2000. I have seen the problem and the loose and feral cats continue to get worse, with the peak happening because of the pandemic and the limitations of our local vets to be able to take care of these pets. In 2018, I saw firsthand in my neighborhood what happens when people do not spay and neuter their pets. I ended up taking 12 kittens and some adult cats to the Turlock Spay and Neuter with help from a program that the shelter was running called City Lines. I took my time and effort to trap these kitties. Most were not friendly, but they have been fixed, and the population in my neighborhood has started to decline. This year, two female kittens showed up. I went to the city to get a voucher, hoping for the same result, but was told the vouchers are only for pets. This exclusion made the problem worse. I ended up trapping and paying for these kittens myself, but I cannot afford to continue doing this, most vets were booked so far out that they would have been pregnant by the time a local vet was able to spay them. We need a more, we need a more local solutions, a local shelter vet would really help put a stop in the incredible amount of feral cats. Along with the low-cost vaccines would help stop the spread of animal illness. I will continue to look out for the cats in my neighborhood, get them attention when they need it, and make sure that they are spayed or neutered and they get the proper OTIP to identify as a DNR cat. There are people in town who do not do their best to try and stop this overpopulation, but as many more people move in and are being irresponsible with their pets, it is the pet that pays the price, so many kittens are being rehomed on Facebook. It is sad that these cats will cause more of a future problem, and maybe with some programs in place, our city can get ahead of this issue. Thank you for your time and giving me the opportunity to share my personal experience and voice in this issue, Angela Curtis. Good afternoon, I want to express my support for the immense need for more support for your animal shelter. I am located in Redwood City, and through local rescues, I have fostered many cats from Los Banos. Despite its variant efforts, your shelter cannot address the growing animal issues of your city at its current levels. Specifically, the shelter needs an advisory board to help guide and lead, low, no-cost spay and neuter services to address pet overpopulation, a shelter veterinarian on-site to treat the sick and injured pets, and finally, a TNR program to support cat colonies and stop the cycles of kittens being born outside. This program will not go away, and will only get worse if it is not addressed now. Please approve the funding and supports needed to help this shelter serve your community. Thank you for your time, Lisa Chavez.
Hello, my name is Peter Keough, and I am a LMFT, living and working in Hollister. Unfortunately, I see clients on Wednesday evenings and cannot attend this evening. I volunteer with Fetch and Sometimes Area Rescues to transport vulnerable animals from shelters in the surrounding areas to
to foster, adopt, or other rescues. I have had extensive experience with Los Banas Shelter in the past year, plus, and have found Jason and Mariah and several volunteers I have met to be helpful, reliable, supportive of the animals and the public. I write to support the need for funding because I have been in the shelter numerous times and find it to be inferior in design and function to any other shelter I have ever been involved with. The size of, the size of the condition, the setup, the fact that the public cannot comfortably access the shelter with its tiny, single-door and non-existent lobby or entryway, the fact the office is portable with no dedicated staff, exacerbates the pressure of the limited staff to respond nimbly to community calls for service, paperwork, and documentation, veterinary services such as vaccination, medical papers, exercising the dogs, dealing with the public and transporters, and all in a tight space with litter or no air conditioning. Faintly gets, frankly, it smells bad in that place. Also, I have never seen or heard of a veterinarian being anywhere near that place. Dogs and cats get limited care as I see it and must soldier through their conditions as they wait for either freedom or execution, and I have also never seen more than two dogs in this spacious fenced area, probably due to a lack of recruitment to a visual and olfactory disturbing environment. Jason and Meyer, Mariah do a valuable service and work hard in a space not fit for its purpose. Yet, many of us are devoted to this shelter because of its purpose and the efforts of the staff to get the job done despite the overwhelming drawbacks. Perhaps recruitment of local foster parents and volunteers would increase with an overhaul and a good scrubbing. Thank you for listening, Peter Keigho. Hello, council members and mayor, my name is Alyssa Homan, and I live at 2131 East Pacheco Boulevard. I would be there in person, but I am on vacation, so here I, I am emailing in my public comment. I am a lifelong pet owner, and I currently have a dog rescued named Oreo and a cat Gary, who adopted us after being dumped in the apartment I live in. There is a huge feral cat situation going on in Los Banas. Every neighborhood has a colony. My area is particularly sad. I see about four feral moms and about five feral boys. The Foxtail issue at my apartments is dangerous combo with a feral cat issue. About two and a half weeks ago, I rescued feral cats, five-week-old kitten, and a Foxtail deep under his eyelid, and it was severely infected. It was around 9:00 PM. We have no shelter vet to care for animals, city animals, which ferals are mean. We don't even have an emergency vet for our own pets, little and a feral kitten. Kathy and I had to pull it out, and luckily, we had an, had antibiotics for him. Otherwise, he would have had to have surgery with Levi, someone out of town. If I wouldn't have rescued him, he'd have lost, he, he'd have a best lost his eye or at worst, die from infection. A week ago, I rescued a three-week-old kitten, again born to a feral mom who on bottle-feeding shelter is overlocated, overloaded, so I had no choice but to foster him. We desperately need a free TNR for the ferals. There is also the issue of no or low-cost spay-neuter for residents' pets. We have an issue of dogs and cats roaming, not microchipped and not fixed. A free or low-cost clinic for spay-neuter, vaccine, microchip clinic, and education on leashing your pet in proper care would put a huge dent into that issue. We also need an animal advisory commission committee that oversees your shelter. Our shelter needs a huge update. If you haven't been in there, I encourage the council members and mayor to drop in. The cats are next to the dogs, so they are constantly stressing from the barking. There is also neglect and abuse at the shelter, which is why we need an animal advisory committee. The one million set aside for the shelter needs to have room to separate cats and dogs in space or an emergency shelter vet. Even though we don't have any emergency vet or tech vets hired yet, we can still be prepared. Many of us together, as a group, emailed in a greater option under that budget. The 55K for spay-neuter, please consider bringing in SNIP us here. I think spay-neuter for dogs and cats, but encourage donations to SNIP and keeping it going is a great option. Please get these suggestions on the agenda, and it's signed, Alyssa Homan. I am going to watch the council meeting online tonight, and I also want to include my statement of support for the animal shelter. And she submitted a five-page, a four-page document. Just gonna kind of briefly go over it. I am Christine McDonald, and I purchased my home in Los Banas, 2010. I began my journey in animal welfare in 1992 and have served in animal shelters in both employed and volunteer capacities as well as private practices as a veterinary assistant. I volunteered at the animal, the Los Banas Animal Shelter from 2016 to 2018. I am here to offer my support to the issue of upgrading our animal shelter, building and to advocate the veterinary services and a spay program. In researching what I want to discuss, I found a beautiful 12,200 square foot animal, square foot shelter designed intended to replace the current shelter. Because the new shelter is not happening in the immediate future, the study recommends, I quote, "The highest priority recommendation was to bring a modular building on site to serve as a no, low-cost cat housing space with new double compartment cages in order to get cats out of the noisy dog kennel when they currently share." Improving animal housing can have the biggest effect on animal health. Our recommendations include expanding dog exercise yards, adding a ventilation system, and renovating the old cat housing area into much-needed support space. The study references UC Davis Corret Shelter Medicine Program's best practices, which resemble the minimum care standards outlined by the American Veterinary Medical Association for sheltered animals. The AVMA Guidelines for Standard of Care serves as the minimum requirements to ensure the well-being and proper care of sheltered animals. Minimal, minimum requirements are to not able to be met at the Los Banas Animal Shelter. Here is a list, including but not limited to those requirements that I don't believe are being met. Prompt assessment and management of animals in pain, distress, or deteriorating health. Protocols for common diseases and health conditions. Pain management is essential. Emergency medical care plans must be in place. Outbreak responses require risk management. Depopulation should be a last resort. Primary exclusors, enclosures such as cages or kennels must be structurally sound and free from defects. Wire mesh bottoms or slated floors should be used. Separate compartments within the primary enclosure are important to allow animals to eat and sleep. Cat housing should be elevated off the floor at human eye level to reduce stress. Primary enclosures with indoor/outdoor access are ideal for most animals. Outdoor spaces in primary enclosures must protect animals from adverse weathers, predators, and prevent escape. Dogs should be given the opportunity to hide with, in their enclosure. Animals that pose acute welfare or safety risks during handling should be housed in enclosures that allow humane, touch-free daily care. Cohousing or keeping more than one animal in an enclosure can improve animal welfare. The size and setup of enclosures used for cohousing requires special considerations. Cohousing areas may require in-house measures to prevent escape. Animals must be carefully selected for cohousing based on age, sex, health, and behavioral compatibility. Isolation housing is necessary to prevent the spread of infectious diseases. Heating and ventilation and air quality should be maintained for the comfort and well-being of animals. Noise must be minimized in animal housing areas as it can cause, cause discomfort and stress to the shelter animals. Intake spaces in shelters should be designed to create a welcoming environment for clients while minimizing stress for animals. Thank you for your time and consideration. Signed, Christine McDonald. And the full letters on file with the city corp. I would like to express my support for the council hiring two attendants at the local shelter. However, the budget for animal services need to be increased as well as investing in in-house veterinary care. Lastly, I see the need for installing an animal advisory committee, which could help address and guide the community's needs in animal services. Could these points be addressed tonight? From Peter D. Feeger. Animal, dear city council and community members in Los Banas. My name is Jennifer Flick. I'm a foster mom and an adopter of rescue animals. I manage a rescue animal transport group that is over a thousand members strong, and I am also the director of a small cat and kitten rescue. The majority of animals that I have rescued this year have come from the Los Banas Animal Shelter. I also donate supplies whenever I determine a need that I can fulfill. I wanted to write to you all today in support of any budget or decisions making that will help the animals of the Los Banas Animal Shelter, the staff and volunteers, and any residents that own animals. My first foster dog was from Los Banas. Over five years ago, I was told that the Los Banas Shelter was a dismal place and that most people would not enter. My foster dog came to me very traumatized and poor condition. When I started the Fetch Transport Group, we started transporting animals out of the animal shelter. Thankfully, there were people networking these animals, and they leave to go to rescues all over the Bay Area and beyond. More recently, my kitten rescued Scritch has been focused on helping the cats and kittens on Los Banas. We try to pull kittens and cats to safety and collaborate with other rescues and facilitate that safety in other way possible, as I am sure you are aware. The animals get a five-day stray hold and then typically only five additional days. After that, the animals are at risk of euthanasia regardless if they are healthy or not. There is no vet care, no spay-neuter services, and no trap-neuter return services. Animals are adopted out, unfixed, and at a slow rate. Animals leaving for rescue out of the area is currently the most effective. Animals that arrive injured or ill in most cases do not receive any medical care from the shelter. It is very clear to animal rescues and animal lovers all over the nearby areas that your animal shelter is in need of physical overhaul in the addition of basic and emergency medical care being available to your stray animals. In addition, the pet and feral cat overpopulation could be addressed with no cost or low spay-neuter and neuter and TNR services being available. A shelter vet would ensure that animals receive timely and appropriate care and also that they are spayed and neutered and microchipped prior to adoption. Implementing an advisory, animal advisory committee made up of city officials, staff, volunteers, and rescue representatives would be a great first step to give input about making an action plan for the Los Banas Animal Shelter move forward. This committee would also be a, would be, would also be vital in ensuring that the shelter continues on a path that guarantees appropriate care and most successful outcome for the animals that come to the shelter. My vision is that the Los Banas Animal Shelter and the community itself would make great strides towards good animal husbandry and start to become a model shelter that others, other counties would look to as an example. Los Banas has a lot of rescue support at the moment, and if the city can participate, the benefit would be maximized. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to continuing to be a part of the solution for the animals that come into your care. Jennifer Flick, Director of Scritch Kittens. I just have three more. Hello, thank you for taking the time to read my email. I am extremely supportive and thankful for the city's decision to add two new shelter attendants. I hope these individuals will be full-time employees. Additionally, I hope that this is only the beginning of the new hires for the shelter because it desperately needs to provide in-house veterinary services, which require bringing on a clinic director. I'd also like to request for the spay-neuter funds for TNR. The number of unhoused cats in the city is staggering, and each spring/summer, the number of kittens being brought to the shelter increases. We need more TNR, and the only way for that to happen is for the city to allocate money towards the initiative. Lastly, I'd like to highly suggest an animal advisory board to help provide guidance to the shelter. The current management of the shelter is by the police department, which lacks the background or training in the animal care. While they do the best they can, formally incorporating an advisory board will help to ensure the animals of the Los Banas receive the appropriate care while in the shelter. Thank you, Rachel Watzke. Hi. Imagine that you're a little kid lost outdoors in the cold. You don't know where your parents are. Maybe they abandoned you, you're shivering, hungry, and scared. Finally, some nice people find you, they wrap you up in a blanket and take you indoors. You think you're finally safe, maybe you'll even find a family to live in, a home. The people don't tell you this, but you only have five days left to live. Ten, if you're lucky, you could count the days on your hand before you will be euthanized, not because you did anything wrong, but because the shelter didn't have enough space. This is the reality facing the animals at the animal shelter, at the Los Banas Animal Shelter. Some are mama cats who just gave birth to tiny infant kittens. Others are friendly cats who were dumped and let down by their owners. There are cats who are injured who could recover with TLC but are put down because of lack of vet sources. All the animals are, all the animals are all innocent, and they deserve a chance. We desperately need a vets on staff and a low-cost spay-neuter program to prevent any more suffering. This will fix the program at the root and prevent the need for more euthanizations paying off over the long run. Trap-neuter return is proven to work. Otherwise, more stray cats will move into the same space, costing the city more time and money. Please imagine yourself in the shoes of a helpless animal. Treat them the way you would want to be treated. Thanks. This is my last one. Dear city council members, as a concerned member of the community, I am writing to express my deep concern regarding the issue of feral and stray animals within our city. The problem of feral and stray animals roaming around our streets and neighborhoods is a growing concern that can have serious public health implications. And considering this, I would like to propose the implementation of a trap-and-release program, low-cost spay-and-neuter options, and large shelter with extended hours that can help address the issue. A trap-and-release program is a humane and effective way of controlling the feral cat population. It involves trapping the cats, vaccinating them, spaying and neutering, and then releasing them back into their territory. This method can help reduce the spay animal population by preventing further breeding and reducing the transmission of diseases that can be a risk to humans and other animals. In addition to a trap-and-release program and low-cost spay-and-neuter options, a large shelter with extended hours can be a valuable resource for our commuter town. Many of our residents commute long distances to work outside of Los Banas, making it difficult for them to access shelter services during regular business hours. Having a shelter with extended hours can enable more pet owners to reunite with their lost pets and contribute to reducing the stray animal population. Feral and stray animals pose a significant threat to public health as they may carry various diseases such as rabies and toxoplasmosis. Additionally, they can cause damage to property, create nuisance, and be a hazard to drivers on the road. Furthermore, the implementation of a trap-and-release program, low-cost spay-and-neuter options, and a large shelter with extended hours in Los Banas can only address the issue of stray animals, but can also bring about social and economic benefits. Studies have shown that these types of programs can lead into a decline in animal control costs, reduced exposure to animal-borne diseases, and overall improvement in public health and safety. In conclusion, I urge the Los Banas City Council to consider the implementation of a trap-and-release program, low-cost spay-and-neuter options, and a large shelter with extended hours to help combat the issue of feral and stray animals within our city. These initiatives can be a humane and effective way of controlling the feral animal population while also bringing about social and economic benefits to our community. Thank you for considering my proposal. Alyssa Roden. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. This time, I'll close the public forum. Move on to item seven, consideration of the approval of the consent agenda. And before I ask any other council members if they have any items that they want to put to the side, I'm going to ask that we, we remove item seven C for a separate discussion. And if there's any, any other items that you want to have moved. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, I'd like to pull items D for discussion and separate vote.
Uh, D is in David.
D is in David.
Okay, thank you. All right, seven C and seven D. Any other items? No? All right, so let's, uh, let's start with item seven C. And for this, councilmember Lambert. Yeah, does the city clerk want to read the items first?
Again, here we go. Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Limit numbers 239164 through 239347 in the amount of $1,155,889.84. Measure P Oversight Committee Report. Would you like me to read the items that are being pulled or not?
Yeah, please.
Okay. City Council Resolution Number 6651, Amending the Policy Regarding Waiver or Partial Waiver of Departmental Services Service Charges Relative to Special Events to Include the Fourth of July as an Exempt Event. City Council Resolution Number 6652, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Professional Services Agreements and the Public Works Director/City Engineer to Administer Professional Services Agreements with Ronnie's Inc., West Coast Arboris, and A+ Tree LLC for On-Call Tree Maintenance Services. City Council Resolution Number 6653, Approving the Project Reimbursement Agreement for Traffic Improvements Between the City of Los Banas and the Los Banas Unified School District for the Intersection Improvements at Place Road and East B Street in the Amount of $1,607,705.97. City Council Resolution Number 6654, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Memorandum of Understanding with Sangra Law Industries LLC and Step Up on Second Street. and Step Up on Second Street, Inc. for the Development, Property Management, Case Management, and Supportive Services for Home Key Program Located at 2169 East Pacheco Boulevard. And the items are to be approved as submitted minus items C and D.
I, I also neglected to indicate that I'd like to pull item F as well.
F?
F.
So C, D, and F. All right, so let's do, uh, let's do D and F first. Let's start with item seven D. Councilmember Lewis?
Uh, yes. On this particular item, um, reading through the proposals, we have like, the, the contracts are basically all the same. And the R, we had three RFPs in here. They were all the same. Um, but my question that I have is, um... Okay, so I, I'd like to find out from staff, our need to hire three separate companies for, uh, on, on-call arborists.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, and, and the member of the public. So, um, the reason why we chose to select three is to give us the flexibility on able to select a on-call tree contractor at any times needed, mainly because when we previously proposed, the previous RFP to include landscape maintenance and tree maintenance, a programmatic tree maintenance was going to be a significant cost to the city. So when we are issuing an on-call contract like this, there is a limited amount to where, you know, we can't really just hand an on-call contract that's over a very large contract amount, like a million or two million. This on-call service is to, really to compensate for when the city council or when there is a need for a programmatic tree trimming approach so that we have the available contractor to perform this work. Secondly, is that staff feel the need that we want to be able to be inclusive of all the local contractors that is available to do the work to where a major or a large contract in the half a million or a million contract will rule out a lot of those local contracts also. Currently, we do have in the budget for about $250,000 worth of work for tree trimming. And that's why we kind of put it for three possible contractors at the maximum limit of $250,000 each.
So you're saying at a maximum limit of $250,000 each?
That's correct.
So that's $750,000 a year we're going to spend on tree trim?
It's, it's on an as-needed basis only. Our current, again, our current budget is only $250,000. However, from our experience receiving the previous RFP for a programmatic tree trimming approach for a 10-year period, it's looking closer to one to $2 million. And that's why we feel that 750 is a good starting point to when city council, if or when the city council wanted to have a programmatic tree trimming program.
Okay, so, um, my next question would be, and I'm not against tree trimming, is at 750, which is basically the maximum in, in these three contracts, if you hire all three at the same time, how is that going to be sustainable?
So, so again, this is a maximum limit that we can. If we only have budgeted for 250, we only need to give those work. Those $250,000 is not guaranteed. It's on an as-needed basis.
There, there's only $250,000 in the budget that, that we're proposing for tree trimming in, in the upcoming year. So we're, we, we're not budgeting 750. It just gives a little bit of, of leverage to have a local purveyor of, of tree trimming on an emergency basis. I, I'm sorry, I'm repeating what you're saying, but...
Okay, so with that being said, wouldn't it have been better to just make the maximum budget 250 and divide that between the three contractors and if in the future the city could afford to bring it back to council to say, hey, um, we have more money now, we're able to afford this, rather than just giving a blanket $750,000. And with that, um, you know, I, I would question whether or not it would be sustainable for the city to do something of that magnitude.
The budget is a maximum of 250,000.
But that's the budget.
Yes.
These contracts, as I understand...
So we can't spend more than the budget. So even if they're given a, a not-to-exceed amount, we can't then just give them each 250,000. The appropriations for this is, is 250. So that could be split three ways. It could be given to one person. It, it, the, the maximum right now that we can spend is 250, not 750. It just states that within the contract so that if we do choose one, that we have the ability to utilize that budget for that one contractor.
Okay, it's in the budget. It's in the budget. I understand that. But again, I'm saying that with the, the way these contracts are written, each three of these, uh, contractors can receive 250,000. And I, I find that a bit much to be sustainable.
I, I don't, I don't think that's what they're conveying. They're conveying if we have three contractors, the, the most they're going to pay out is 250,000. It could be to, no, to one.
Okay, that's what I asked you originally, and you said yes.
No, I didn't. I said the, the, that the contract states that the budget amount is that we have in the budget is 250,000, not per total for tree trimming.
If I might help. The, the contracts are on an on-call basis by task order. So staff has the ability within each one of those three contracts to control how much is spent on one individual, uh, on-call arborist. And so, uh, just because we're approving those three contracts doesn't mean all three of them are hired today. They get going and they can spend $250,000 each. There's an interim step and that is it's going to be on an on-call basis based on task order that's set forth inside the contract. So staff will be able to control how much work any of the, all, all of the three will be able to do within that budgetary one-year period of time.
Is there a retainer fee that we have to pay upfront?
No.
Okay.
So what, basically what happens if a project is identified that's going to need tree trimming, staff can get a proposal from the three on-call specialists and, and staff can control how much each or none of them are going to get in terms of that on-call task. So it's, 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 uh, it's going to be, it's going to be limited in little bits and pieces, but will never exceed 250 total amongst all three of them. It could be 250,000 for one of them, but that means there will be no other task orders for the other two contracts. They're just agreeing to be on-call to, to handle those tasks as needed and as requested by staff.
Okay. Well, um, again, that's not how I understood it, and I'll accept what you have given to me, Mr. Vaughn. Um, so that clarifies it. And certainly if, if it's over 250, since each one of them has 250 in the contract, I would assume that's going to come back to council for a budget adjustment, which we're able to do and, and so...
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, that's my question on that particular contract and, um... I don't, I don't think there were any questions that I had in the rehearsals of each of the contracts. They were pretty much all the same. Um, and again, that, that's why the question arose. So that concludes my question on item number, um...
D?
Seven D.
All right, do we have a motion for just this item, D? Right. Yeah, we're, you're, we're not going to approve the, the items first. We're, let's just, let's basically start with D at this time. Uh, because we have Councilmember Lambert who will need to excuse himself for one of the, one of the items. So let's, we'll just go with D. Do you want to combine them? D and F? We can move on to F.
If he, if he needs to be excused and that's what you're doing, I'll go on and take, take F now.
Okay.
Um... And, and these are some logistic questions that I have. I, I assume in the recital that the developer would be the same as the owner of the property once it's turned over to them? No, is that something different? Okay, because in, in the body, it talks about, um... Well, the city's involved and then there's the owner and operator of La Plaza, which I assume is the consortium or the state organization. Could somebody maybe explain that to me?
So, um, the MOU is between the City of Los Banos and Shangri-La and Step Up on Second Street. Um, the developer is Shangri-La and Step Up on Second Street. As they are the service provider, they are the developer. The City of Los Banos, we will not own the property. That would be the developer that would own the property and operate.
So, so the owner and the developer are one and the same?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, now, I see in the body of the report that the city will have some financial responsibility or contribution to this, probably based on some grants through, um, to offset rent or housing authority. Um, are there other financial obligations that will have an ongoing basis to this pro, property?
No, so it, it would be for operations. And what the city has committed and, and what was the intent with our application with permanent local housing allocation, which is PlA, that funding was originally intended for this program to begin with, and that's what we've committed, is our allocation to be dedicated for operations of the Home Key Project.
And in regards to the cost overruns, uh, does that come out of the grant money? Who pays for that?
Yes, it does. It does come out of the Home Key Project. The Home Key Grant.
So basically, we will be, have some responsibility on an ongoing basis for operations unless there's additional funding out there that can offset that?
Yes, and we've committed that, those PLHA dollars, which are a sustainable funding source as those are recording transactional fees with, with each record in any type of transaction recording that happens at the county through SB2. So that's a sustainable funding source that we've committed to this project.
And do we know what that dollar amount is?
So the estimate for five years is 1.2 million.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think those are all my questions for now.
All right, do we want to make a motion on just items D and F? Oh, gotcha. Yep, correct. Yeah, so if we want to vote on the agenda, consent agenda items, minus seven C. Helps if I push the button.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to approve the consent agenda minus item C.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Motion passes and we will move on to item seven C.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and step down for item C. Also, after that one, I will say step down for item eight due to my business and their location.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any discussion on items, on item seven C? Besides Councilmember accusing himself? If not, I'll, uh, I'll accept a motion. Councilmember Begonia? Did you push the button? I heard you blinking, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution 6651 as submitted.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? All right. Let's move on to, gotta push some more buttons here. Move on to item eight. This is the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement, LBDP, BID Annual Report. For this, we'll go to Community Economic Development Director, Suzanne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So we do have a presentation tonight, but we do have with us Carson Lambeth from Civitas who will be presenting on behalf of the Los Banos Downtown Association. We have folks here also from the Los Banos Downtown Association that make up the board. So I will get that presentation up for us. Um, here we go. All right, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Carson.
Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Carson Lambeth, as Stacy mentioned, and I am here from Civitas. And our firm specializes in helping property improvement districts form and renew. And so I'm here on behalf of the Los Banos Downtown Association tonight to give you their annual report. I want to start off by thanking the city staff and especially Stacy for all of her time on this project. She couldn't have done it without her. And if you have any specific questions about programs that we don't go over in this presentation, we do have Maribel Garcia here, who is the Executive Director of the Association, as well as Stacy, who can maybe help answer if there's something really specific that I don't know the answer to. So, um, the first slide that I have for you, let's see if I can make this work.
Oh, it might need to be turned on.
Ah, that could be. Let's see. Oh, here, I see. All right. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what a property and business improvement district is, for those of you that don't know. It is when a group of property owners come together in a specific geographical location, usually like a downtown or a commercial corridor, and they assess themselves a certain dollar amount to pay for services they otherwise would not have. And the reason why these instruments are so important and have done so many great things throughout the United States is because they revitalize a downtown. They bring vitalization to a downtown. And they are able to do that through clean and safe programs, through marketing and through events that will then bring more people to the downtown, build a feeling of community, community for your community members as well as increase, uh, property values and, uh, business retention for your area. So, um, some of the different services that P bids offer, I have a list here. It's quite comprehensive. But the most common are usually clean and safe, maintenance, tree trimming, advocacy for business owners and property owners, and also the marketing and events. But you can kind of see there's lots of different services that P bids could provide, and that's why they're so important and people think they're a useful tool. Some of the terrific events that you have that are being offered by your Los Banos Downtown Association, Maribel was up here before you earlier talking about the Fourth of July event, which hopefully you all have on your calendar. There's quite a few events that are throughout the year. And I'll just note, another notable one will be your lighting celebration at the end of November and then the holiday events that are to follow. But there's lots of opportunities to participate, and I encourage you to look at their website and to participate in these events and enjoy. Some of the accomplishments that they have done over the past year are remarkable. For maintenance and general security, it includes the upkeep of planters, adding flowers to the planters and planting che, trees. They've purchased and will implement a new security system for the downtown, which is going to be quite important and wonderful for all the owners, property owners and business owners. And they've purchased 30 new tr- And they've purchased 30 new trash receptacles for the downtown. Infrastructure developments, they made a contribution for the Los Manos archway sign that's going to be implemented in the next year, new downtown lighting and pole banners to kind of dress up the downtown. As far as sponsorships, they have worked with the high school to sponsor the athletic program for Pacheco's High School. They've done pressure washing and litter removal in the downtown, as well as graffiti removal services. So the boundaries of the district have not changed. You basically have approximately 83 parcels with 61 property owners in the district. So the time for changing the boundaries would be during renewal. So if you decided that you wanted to expand the district or to have a larger area, that would be happening in the next year when we're looking at the renewal process. And if you have questions about any of that, I can also address those at the end of this presentation. So the improvements and activities that this district is providing, they have to be consistent with the management district plan that was created during the formation of the district. And so all of the services and all of the activities that I just talked about that they've implemented in the last year are consistent with the plan. As you can see, the first category in the management district plan is the maintenance and general security. So we talked a little bit about that already and there's some of the different services that they can offer in the future as well, which will help increase the markability of downtown. Marketing and place making, that is their second category that they focus on. And then small infrastructure and operations are the last two categories. And they have it right now so that the budget is equally distributed among these four categories. So 25% in each of these is what is to be spent each year. So for 2023-24, the Los Manos Board of Directors, Downtown Association Board of Directors, has approved an increase, which the management district plan gives them the ability to do of 2.5% for the assessments. So that will increase the budget roughly about $3,800, which will bring a new budget of $157,611.30. There is the ability, since you do have the budgets, the categories kind of broken into 25, 25, 25, if you do need to spend more money in one area, you can take up to 10% of another budget category and allocate it to the other category to, you know, increase the amount that you can spend. So the assessment rate, as I mentioned, was increased to the 2.5%. And so roughly, you have a new rate of 29 cents for a standard parcel and 21 and a half cents for the government parcels. So those are the new rates for the next year. Okay, so for surplus, it looks like for that, what will be carried over for next year will be roughly about $55,000. And last year, the district was able to raise funds outside of assessment dollars in the amount of about $13,170.46. And those, those dollars actually cover the required general benefit that is required by the management district plan. So that is, they met that requirement as well. And then that's my proposal, not my proposal, sorry, my presentation. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right, thank you. Any, any questions from council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Under the accomplishments, one of the areas that you spoke about was the purchase of new security system from the P bid. Has that been purchased or is it still in progress?
David is going to come up here to my rescue. Taylor, Taylor Wolfson. Oh, Taylor, sorry.
No problem. Taylor Wolfson, sorry. So it was about the security system? So the reason I've come up was because it's a security company I've worked with before. And the answer to your question is, yes, it's been purchased. So a contract was signed, it's been purchased, the security company is in the process of securing all the cameras that are needed and then it'll go up.
So this is external in the downtown area?
It'll be external in the downtown area. I think one of the great things about this is it's, it's going to be on a lot of private property, which is going to give the ability to watch a lot more than just some of the city cameras that are out there, because the private property owners have agreed to do it as well.
And is there a central place where there will be monitoring for the cameras?
Sorry. So, yeah, one of the things I think that's great about this system, that's a little different than some of the other camera systems, which are more passive, is that somebody's actually monitoring this in real time. So there's a bank of TVs, so to speak. This is what this company does for a living. They've done it in downtown streets in Oakland, they've done it in LA, and we were lucky enough to get them here. And so they have a bank of TVs and whenever there's motion on a particular camera, and of course, they can control how much motion there is or where it, you know, if it's a busy street, they can block out the street if they need to, if it's just to watch a storefront or something like that. So there's some flexibility in the system and whenever there's some movement, then that, that comes to the forefront and that person has an opportunity who's watching to see, they need to make a judgment call at that point and decide, you know, hey, here's somebody with a can of spray paint and a backwards hat who's going to tag a wall or whatever. And the camera system also comes with microphones. So that person has the ability to say specifically, hey, you with the can of paint and the backwards hat, which suddenly says, that guy's talking to me, right? You know, you need to leave this area, this is protected. Or, you know, downtown is under curfew at the moment or whatever we decide to have done.
And, and if you need, the company that...
Bandit Systems is the name of it.
If, if that process doesn't work, do they have a secondary process, like perhaps notifying the police department?
Yeah, 100%. So my guess would be through this process, there's going to be a discussion with the police department. The, the conversations that I've had with Bandit Systems is cities that they move into, they like to sit down and say, you know, hello, we're going to be calling you at some point. We thought we should introduce ourselves at first. So oftentimes, that's what they'll do. They'll do, one, reach out and say, you know, you with the spray paint, you need to leave. You know, whether or not the person complies, if the person does not comply, they'll reach out again and say, hey, really, we're not kidding, this is private property and you need to go or we're going to call the police. And then at that time, a phone calls may to the police if the person hasn't complied.
And lastly, is there a date that you have set or approximate date as to when this installation may happen?
So the short answer is yes, the longer answer is I don't have the contract in front of me, but...
I would just recommend not answering that, because I don't think we need to tell criminals when we're going to have cameras live, in my opinion, especially in public.
I need to know whether or not it's going to be this year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for answering that question.
All right, anyone else, any other questions?
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yes, just by motion.
So you're just looking for a motion to accept the report?
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Los Manos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District Report as submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion passes. And if we could bring back Councilmember Lambert. All right, we'll move on to item nine, consideration of election to become successor agency to the Los Manos Redevelopment Agency. For this, we'll go to our interim finance director.
Mayor, City Council, this is going to be a presentation on really why the city should become the successor agency. This is the former RDA and the, the history of this is, is that back in 2012, the, the state needed to find money for the promise to the school districts and dissolved our, our best form of redevelopment and that was our redevelopment agencies. And what happened is at this point is, is that the, the cities could choose to become the successor agencies or they could just opt out of the whole thing, of which I believe about six or seven cities did. The reason why the City of Los Manos did that is because the property that the RDA owned had some contamination. A big one was Pacheco, I think it was the oil. Yeah, Pacheco Oil and, and so, so they, they, they didn't want the liability and so the DLA took over and basically the state mandated these designated local agencies to have a board and to really operate through all of the obligations that the RDA had. So the Dissolution Act enabled all of this to happen, the city declined. And basically, the DLA went through the process of taking care of the obligations and the business of the RDA. During that time, I was actually involved with, with, with the DLA as, as I was the accounting staff for, for about six to seven years. So I'm very familiar with, with this redevelopment and the DLA. Really, what, so what happens is, is the DLA or the successor agencies, they receive RPTTF and the RPTTF is, is determined by a recognized obligation payment schedule or ROPS. And these are sent out every year by the Department of Finance in California and the agencies, all of the successor agencies go through the process of, of listing all of their obligations that they're going to require this. It's, it's the former tax increment, now they just gave it a different name. So in this ROPS, there's what's called an enforceable obligations and these were permitted under the Dissolution Act and these included bond, bond payments, in this case remediation requirements and administrative expenditures. The ROPS has to be approved by the successor agency governing board, the Merced Countywide Oversight Board and then the California Department of Finance. So it's, it's quite a process. And it was, and it's, and it's been quite a process up until this point with meet and confers and, and, you know, disallowing of this and that. But, you know, since, since the DLA has, has taken care of most of the obligations, it's now become mostly a vessel for debt service. And then once approved the ROPS, the, the, the agency gets this RPTTF distributed twice a year in a six-month period, usually in, in June and in December. So at this point, the, the reason why this is advantageous for the city to become the DLA, I mean, sorry, the successor agency, is the DLA has transferred all of the properties, it's resolved all litigation and has completed all remediation along those properties that have been transferred over. The city would not take those properties until they were to a point where, where they were able to be transferred over. The enforceable obligations that are on the ROPS are basically the bonds from 2014 that were issued for the purpose of the community center. Bond-related expenses, there's LLC agreements between the RDA, property owners and the city. And so those are just really, and then the administrative, the debt administration of, of this. And those are really just the, the items that are remaining. The city already operates as the accounting department or fiscal agent. So the, the DLA is already on our general ledger. We charge them a, a certain fee to administer this. We, we pay the, we wire the monies to the bondholders. We, we maintain any general ledger accounting for the payment of invoices, the bank, we reconcile the bank accounts and so forth. So the city staff and the finance department is very familiar with this process. And so it really wouldn't even be much in terms of transferring this over. It's really more in terms of the governance of this. So the, the city and the city council, they would basically take on the governance of, of the successor agency. So, you know, basically, the reason why this is a good idea is that cities are, are kind of designed to act in perpetuity, right? Exist forever and the DLAs really aren't. They are constantly finding members to serve on their board in order to have a quorum to even do business. So it's, it, it, it fits nicely in terms of the city taking this over. So also, DLA board members that are across the board are, are ready to retire and we have bond obligations all the way up to 2035. So as we, what I'd said earlier in terms of ongoing obligations is each year, city staff, finance would be preparing and submitting the annual ROPS in order to get RPTTF. There's also a PPA, which is a prior period adjustment that is required. So what that is, is it's basically a true-up that the county then works with you to see if you don't spend everything you ask for within that year. A year later, you're, you're looking at this and you're doing a prior period adjustment. And any shortfalls or, or non-expended funds actually reduce the amount of, so you'll, you'll basically have cash on hand. It reduces the amount of RPTF that you get. So it's, this is just mostly, again, an administrative function of the city. But we, but in terms of reporting, the, the two main reports that, that will happen will be the ROPS and the PPA. And in past years, there would be an amendment to the ROPS if all of a sudden we figured that there was a funding shortfall and we needed to do that. But in this case, really, this successor agency is just basically a glorified financing authority or, or a debt administration authority. The members of the city council would be required to file Assuming Office Form 700, similar to the stuff that, that you guys do now. Basically, the, the, the big thing here in the cost to the city is really none, because our, all of our administrative costs will be covered. And really, this, this allows the city also to, to ensure that the bonds are paid until maturity. Whereas if the DLA cannot find a quorum, it, it might create an event where the bonds could not have funding in essence default, which in proxy, considering the conduit nature of these bond issues, could impact the city's credit rating. So it's another great reason why the city should, should take this over. The other thing is, is as we go through this and we're able to reduce these obligations, the city itself receives property taxes in the form of a residual property tax. So whatever tax increment above the obligations, that's redistributed through it, through a taxing agreement between the county, city, school districts, the whole deal. So that could create more income for, for the city and this would be governmental funds. Some of the stuff that we budget, for instance, for our housing stuff, we use some of this redistributed money for that purpose. So again, the exposure to this is, one, the city is really indemnified from any actions of the agency. And really, the Dissolution Act limits the liability of the former agency in, in, in any shape or form to the city. So there's really no legal exposure there and I'm sure our city attorney can attest to that. It would be a separate legal entity that would have its own audit. And again, it's... own governance, and so it really is a very lockstep and easy kind of evolution of this agency to be brought back to the fold, so to speak, because really, the whole purpose of this was the property and the remediation, and now the city has all of those anyway. So now, it's just a matter of monitoring what's left in terms of the administration of maybe five or six obligations, and that's primarily it. So our recommended action is that the city council adopt the Resolution 6655 and become the successor agency of the former RDA.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6655, estimated.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for that report. All right, let's move on to Item 10, Public Hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein in the court, you may be limited to raise only those issues you or someone else raised in the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So we'll go to Item 10A. This is a public hearing to receive public comment on consideration of the appropriation limitation of the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
So the wonderful story of the appropriations limit, this was created in the 70s, Proposition 4 and amended in Proposition 111. And basically, what this does is it limits the city's ability to approve appropriations of past, so in essence, its ability to tax its population to a certain extent, and this is based upon properties, I'm sorry, population size and/or an inflationary measure. It's kind of more of a function, more than a substantive thing currently. So the actions that are required is that we have a public hearing, and then the second action is that we have to select both the population and inflation options and have those recorded by a vote of council, and that's required by Prop 11. We're requesting that you use the California per capita personal income for the population, I'm sorry, for the inflation option, and then, and just the city's population for the population size. So the per capita income adjustment is 1.0444%, and the change in city population was at 1.011%. This created an appropriations limit of $121,861,461. Now, I would love to be able to say that that's what we could do, but no, we're at about 28 million, so we're only 23% of this, so I don't know if the powers that be that created this thought that inflation would be a lot higher than it is, even though some people think it's pretty high now, but that is where we are. So this is really more of a function of having these parameters stated within public hearing and having the city council vote on that. So we recommend that the council adopt this appropriations limit using those two, the population inflation options that were stated, and move forward from there.
All right, so this time, let's do the public hearing, let's receive the comment consideration on the appropriation limits. Have anyone from the public? Do we have any writing comments on this, on 10A? No? Okay. All right, so I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to 10A1. And do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6656 with setting the appropriations as stated from staff.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Let's move on to Item 10B, Public Hearing to receive public comment and consideration of the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget.
Mayor, City Council, first, I want to make a statement and thank the finance department, especially Kim Tomas and Rosemary Soto, and all the departments and department heads. This started in April, and it has been a lot of consideration and thought and back-and-forths to bring a responsible and, in my opinion, fiscally sound budget, so I want to bring that up first. So let's start with the budget adoption process. So what is a budget? So a budget is an estimate of income, so we estimate this income, and then we propose expenditures based upon those, which we call appropriation over a set period of time. The budget serves as a financial plan for the city, it establishes funding levels for city services, it changes throughout the year, so this is a living document that can increase or decrease as seen fit by governance, management and governance. It's governed by federal, state, and local law. So the budget, it estimates income and expenditures for a set period of time for all of these operation types. The general fund is the operating fund of the city, so this is the discretionary fund that has no restrictions attached to it. Our enterprise funds are all of our utilities and our airport. Special revenue funds are all of our restricted use, so these are all of the funds where we record the revenue that has federal and state restrictions. Our capital projects funds is where we record our capital improvement programs, and our internal service funds are how we account for internal resource allocations between funds, so retiree and fleet. So what is a balanced budget? So there's two components of a budget. A budget has an operating piece to it and a capital piece to it, so we have an operating budget and a capital budget, and these are both in the budget that is proposed. Basically, it's as easy as revenues and sources equal expenditures and uses. So our revenue sources are taxes, fees, interest, et cetera, some transfers in. Expenditures and uses are primarily salaries and materials. A surplus is when the revenues and sources exceed expenditures and uses. A deficit is when expenditures and uses exceed revenue and sources, so fairly simplistic concept. So what is an operating budget? An operating budget deals with recurring revenues and sources and recurring expenditures and uses, and those recurring revenues are sales tax, property tax, you know, assortments of taxes that we have, a license fee, charges for services, transfer, and what's not stated here is use of money, which could be rental income and/or interest or other investment income. Recurring expenditures and uses is wages and benefits. On the non-wage side, you have professional services, and of course, the purchase of materials and supplies, and any transfers that have to be done on an annual basis. What is a capital budget? A capital budget is one-time or restricted revenues, so there's grants, proceeds from debt issuances, gas tax, Measure P, Measure H, Measure V, et cetera, and then one-time expenditures, which is infrastructure, roadways and streets, buildings and equipment, or any consulting arrangements dealing with the overall planning of these one-time expenditures, the construction, in essence. So what my focus on this was is what our operations are, or our operating surplus. So as the budget was presented, the operating revenues of the city was $23.1 million, and the operational cost and transfer is about $21.9 million, and there were one-time costs of about $3.1 million for capital projects, and since I'm talking about operations, I'm just dealing strictly with the general fund. In the Exhibit A, that's in your staff report, it shows an overall expenditure of the general fund showing a $2.2 million deficit, but what you have to do is you have to back out those one-time items, because those one-time items could be a process of a budgetary carryover from last year's budget, or just one-time items of spending, fund equity position that has built up over time. So as you back that out and those transfers, we really have about an $870,000 surplus, an operating surplus. So as we look through this and went through each department, we were very cognizant of the fact that we have an amount of money that has been built over a period of time, but we didn't want to tie the city's finances to a recurring expense that could reduce that surplus over any period of time. So in essence, we are balancing the budget based upon operations. So the capital projects are all, most of them are based upon a capital improvement plan, and this is based on a five-year horizon. It's included in the budget book, it's updated annually, it gives the project costs and available funding for those. Currently, we have budgeted in this budget $26.9 million in infrastructure projects for 2024, and then additionally, we have $16.4 million in equipment and other capital projects not included in the five-year plan, and these are the police station and then the city hall and annex renovation once the police move out of the annex. The one-time expenditures in the general fund are highlighted in Exhibit D, and a lot of these have, they're one-time in nature because they're dealing with things that happen very infrequently, like the master plan or downtown master plans or these types of things. I highlighted a few of the projects that were in the capital budget. The West Eye Street, Northgate Sewer Lift Station projects are about $1 million, the 152 Traffic Signal Synchronization Project was $620,000, Shaughnessy Village and Sunrise Ranch Park Construction is $2 million, the shade structures financed by First Five, roughly $445,000, Seventh Street Ballpark improvements of $300,000. We have a street improvements of $6.2 million, which is a very ambitious, I think, program. And then, one of the items within the enterprise funds that I wanted to highlight was the well number 16 project of $900,000. So this gives you kind of the spread of the general fund revenue and expenditures. As you can see, taxes make up a majority of our general revenues, and personnel make up a majority of our general fund expenditures. This just highlights the total amount of revenues and expenses that we are requesting in this budget. So in order to get a picture of the surplus or the fund equity position that we said it has built up over time, we're estimating the fund equity position in total in the general fund as of the beginning of the fiscal year at almost $34 million. So there's a sign committed in Measure H funds that we pull out of there because those have some restrictions to them, and, you know, I just want to deal with the operations and the discretionary nature of the general fund. So as of the first of this upcoming fiscal year, we're anticipating about $24 million. The proposed budgetary net change is about $2 million, which will bring our estimated unassigned fund equity position at 630, at the end of the fiscal year, at $22,158,021. So just to put a little bit of perspective on this, at the end of 2223, the unassigned fund equity position, actually at the beginning of 2223, so the beginning of last year's budget, we had an unassigned fund equity position of $20,895,706, and as you can see, at the end of this next fiscal year, we will still have, in essence, $2 million more than we had at the beginning of this previous year. So as we went through this budgetary process, we were thinking of how we could increase the level of service to the city, and that was really our primary focus, was, you know, this is, the city is paying this money, and how can we bring the services that are required and that the city requires? So what we did is we looked at the need, which was streets and capital, and as we get into this after I summarize some of the other items in front of you, we'll get into the personnel changes. Here's, Measure H is a component of the general fund, so it's kind of a pseudo-restricted fund, but not really. It has spending priorities, but those spending priorities are just that, they're priorities, but we still highlight this as a special item because it's not carried in as special revenue fund or as a restricted use fund, it's carried in the general fund. So the summaries of expenditures by spending priority are stated here. With the police, you have the personnel, supply, service, and capital outlay in front of you of roughly $1,138,128 for capital, so total budget on the police for Measure H, spending priorities of about $1.4 million. Dispatch, similar, we highlighted what the spending priorities were there and what was spent here, code enforcement, fire, recreation. So these summaries are there, so you can see that we budget for this differently, slightly differently than just the discretionary side of that, yet it's in lockstep. So there's a relationship between, you know, the spending parties of Measure H and how we provide services to the city. This year, the Measure H, or that we're budgeting on the revenue side is about $4 million, and the summaries of expenditures by spending priority is the same. We equalized both to have no spending surplus in Measure H. The other big areas here is the enterprises. So as you can see, the summary of these expenditures are as such, in water, you have personnel, supplies and services, a large capital outlay number, and in these, you have contingencies as you saw with the Crest Hills issue. This year, we needed an even larger contingency probably in wastewater, but we're hoping that Neuron, you know, has his finger on the pulse there, and we made the contingency the same in wastewater. But as you can see, there's a lot of capital that is required for this infrastructure, and as our infrastructure is aging, Neuron, within the capital budget, has identified many items that, as we go through, will be spending not just from a balance standpoint, but monies that have built up over time. So that's why in these cases, most of the items that we've budgeted on the recurring side were really carryovers from last year's budget, so there's not really a whole lot of changes structurally in terms of what happened there. There are There are some, some stuff that's brought over because, just because of personnel issues and whatnot, they weren't able to get completed, so we, we carried those forward. So from a line item standpoint and going through the budget from a line item to line item, we've highlighted any of the differences from the previous budget in, in this presentation and in the exhibits that we gave you in, in the staff report. Not a whole lot has changed. Basically, the, the only things that had changed from personnel standpoint is we gave COLA increases. The MOUs dictated a lot of this in regards to the police officers associations and the sergeant associations, the firemen, firefighters associations, public works units, and all the dispatch and CSOs are all MOU-based, and miscellaneous and unrepresented were in line with what had happened with Public Works and, and the CSOs. There were some changes to the salary schedule, we, and these were approved prior to this. There was an increased step six for, 2.5 for the firefighters association and for the police officers association. We adjusted the salary range for the IT technician based upon information from our IT providers and, and the importance of that technician being involved in the massive amount of technology improvements at the police depart, at the new police station. And then we adjusted the salary range for the community economic director, development director, and the HR director, as was presented in the February 1, 2023 council meeting. We added and converted positions. So these positions were created in order to execute on providing increased services to the city and to help, especially with Public Works, complete a copious amount of, of projects that were placed in front of them for this upcoming budget year. We also created a parks and rec department because we started looking at how parks and rec fit in with Public Works, and we felt that the, the budget alone just for parks and rec, being that the lighting and landscaping districts fall underneath this, that, that they needed to have their own, and also just the initiative to create more service for recreation within the city was one of our initiatives. Through this, we also increased a lot of positions in the public works due to the fact that we have over $25 million of projects in front of us, and, and we needed to, to help execute that. The CSO officer that was added to Measure P was by mandate, that was done through the, the Measure P funding, the 20-year funding program. We added a, a facilities manager position because of the adding to the police station. In the future, we're, we're planning on adding another fire station, maybe two, one with a, a regional component. Also with the renovation of the annex and the city hall, that we, we are trying to create a process of, similar to IT, where a ticket can be brought forth if you're, if you see something that needs to be fixed, and that can be fixed directly. Right now, we, we don't really have a way to do that. It's, it's kind of a wait and see if something breaks. We converted part-time positions to full-time positions in the fleet department. We added some administrative coordination to, to the city manager and to the public works and parks. Other than that, you know, we, oh, so based upon Paul's or the fire chief's strategic initiatives, we, we, we added two firefighters and a fire captain for fire prevention duties, and a fire captain slash battalion chief slash assistant fire chief in order to help in terms of, of building the organization to fund and to staff the future of the fire department, really, with, with new, new fire stations coming online. Those are pretty much all of the highlights of the budget. Really, our actions are that we go through this public hearing and we hear from the public, and that we adopt the Resolution 6657 to adopt this proposed budget for fiscal year 2324.
All right, thank you for that. So before we go for questions and comments from council, let's do the public hearing. So we'll open the, the public hearing for, for comments on this.
Hi, okay. I was looking at the line items at home, and I'm not able to find the right numbers on my phone. So what I was, I had a question regarding the actual building, the proposed money that's to be spent for the shelter, and then I'm not sure, there's like a million off the top of my head since I can't find it on my phone right now, is it about a million 700,000? Is that correct? And is that all going for the shelter, or is that those two different projects that are combined into one figure? Are there, is that like multiple building projects going on under police department?
Yeah, so the, the, the budget for the, the actual shelter, that modulars and, and the land prep and all of that was a million dollars. I believe that the other 700,000, I'm, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, with the other 700 relating to the animal shelter.
I don't know if it goes with the shelter, but it seems to be all combined into one figure in the line items, if I'm correct. I'm not 100% sure. Unfortunately, I don't, like, I'm looking at my phone, and I just, I can't find exactly where, where is the number on the line items? What page is that on?
Oh, I, I'm.
Because that's the number that I'm actually asking.
I think, I think that the million is in ARPA.
Yeah, it's ARPA fund, it's $1 million total for the animal shelter.
Okay, so then what is the other building money?
Oh, are you talking about ARPA? So ARPA also, so, okay, I'm sorry. So the animal shelter was approved and programmed through the, the ARPA COVID money.
Yes.
Right. So we've already gone through and have identified all of the structure and, and the expenditures for that, and that will be in that budget. The other 700 relates to pickleball and recreational items.
Okay, that's what I was wondering if it was a separate project.
Yeah, no, it is, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, that's exactly, okay, thank you. That clarified that. And then there are two new shelter posi, positions at the shelter. Are these attendant positions exactly?
Yes.
Are they full-time?
Yes.
Okay, so they will just be dealing, will they be under PD, or they will be under?
They will be under PD.
They will be under PD, okay. So they will just be then shelter attendants?
Yes.
Okay, so those are two full-time ones. Okay, at this time, I think that answers my question, thank you.
You hit most of my questions, but I have an additional one. For the two positions that you have at the shelter, are they medically, will they be medically able to help the animals? Because I know you've had lots of problems before.
So, so these are budgeted positions in terms of, of their, their training, their requirements, I believe that will be done after, after that. So in, this is, is, is to create the positions and fund the positions. Now, the, in terms of the description, the job descriptions and all that stuff, that will come after.
Okay.
So I, I, I would say I don't know.
Okay, well, at least you're honest. I'm looking at the, a deficit of 2.2 million. I know that you had 3.6 in unexpected expenses. Every city has unexpected expenses. I'm worried about hiring so many new positions, and it's all top-heavy. It was mentioned earlier, you have project managers, you have an assistant for the city manager, you have assistant for the fire department, you have, there's a lot of, I, I don't know, I'm looking at it, and I'm also looking at a city that's already tightening their belt. I own two businesses, and there's a lot less being spent, even the travel through people, less occupancy at our hotels, because people are tightening their belts. So, which would reduce the sales tax, the TOT tax. I don't want to see what happens if we do go into recession, it doesn't look like we're planning on it. We're not always going to be getting this money, 2008, we had a lot of foreclosures where we didn't get property taxes. We're building on something that might not be the maximum income. And so it concerns me. I don't see any padding or leaving, I mean, we're just sucking a whole amount we get in and spending it out.
Okay, so first, those aren't unexpected or unforeseen expenditures? Those are, are planned expenditures, but they are only going to happen in this budget, they're not the next ones. The recurring and the structural, so let's talk about a, a overall budget versus a structural budget. The structural side of these things is really where, where we, we spend our time, because over the last five years, the city's been operating at a pretty sizable surplus due to the fact that these one-time items didn't get done. So now we are, in essence, taking last year's budget, that, a, a lot of these items, and moving them into this one because we're going to execute on actually performing those, those things, of which we needed to create the positions to help, especially with public work. So we talked with the department heads, and the department heads gave us the requirements that they need in order for their department within the organization to execute on the services that, that, that are required for, for the community. So we, that is, that is where, where we, we are in terms of. In terms of how I budgeted for revenues, I took a very conservative approach and, and made a very, not even, it wasn't even close to CPI in terms of, of how I looked at these revenues. We just received our assessments for last year, those increased 7% on the property tax side. I only increased that by a little over a percent. Our sales tax numbers have, are, are coming in stronger than what was budgeted last year, but then again, I'm not taking the CPI index because CPI, as inflation happens, sales tax actually goes up considerably because people might not be spending more, but on durable goods, the things that they spend anyway, there, it actually goes up. And, and it's predicated, sales tax is predicated on the total amount of, of, of the exchange. So, yes, the, the budget is predicated on, on an estimated number on the revenue side, but we've taken a very conservative approach because, yes, I'm worried, a little bit of recessionary pressures, and I've, I've, I've really looked at that. In some cases, a recession is probably necessary in order to quell inflation altogether, but the Fed is still thinking about raising rates, so they're still thinking inflation and the economy is still holding itself outside of a, any type of recessionary position. So when I hear the Fed saying these things, I, 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 I keep the, the, the kind of status quo on the revenue side. The operating budget of which I stated is almost close to a million dollars in a surplus. So, so we're not, we're not betting the ranch on, on bringing top-heavy positions at all. We were budgeting for these positions, but we're not possibly filling these positions right away. It gives the city management, the, and departments, the ability to create an organization and a personnel structure that allows them to execute on city services, in essence, give you guys your roads and build, you know, make sure that the wastewater treatment plant doesn't overflow, or water, you know, is, is, is undrinkable. So this happens to other cities, I, I, you know, you can believe me or not, but it does. But in the, in this, in this case, we have very competent people that, I mean, I have seen over this budget process, and it's been a very thoughtful and considerate, and in, in a lot of cases, based upon city management direction, a very conservative budget. I mean, there's a lot of money that could have been put towards more projects, but we still have to only budget for projects that we can execute and make those prom, we're making promises to the, to the city to say, we're going to do this. So that's what we're, we're trying to execute on, and that's what this one-year proposal that we've presented to the council is.
Okay, I just, I didn't see, like, the fire that was out of control, but they didn't have a ladder truck, because they couldn't get on top of a roof. I saw $280,000, but I've heard that it's a 1.3 million to buy a new truck with a ladder on it?
Yeah, it, it's in multiple, multiple funding, so there, there's in multiple funds, so the.
So that's why I only took part of it?
Yes, yes, right, right. So as we look through this, some of the items are restricted, and they say, you must buy this truck, right? But there's only a percentage that we can use on that, that then the city has to match through other funds, whether it be discretionary funds or others. And that's why you see this being budgeted in different funds. But the equipment itself is budgeted as a whole, we're not just buying, you know, a quarter of a ladder truck.
And then I heard about, at city hall, all the air conditioning units that are old are going to be replaced. I didn't see that budgeted.
Because I believe that was done in this budget.
Oh, in this budget?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, and there's ARPA monies, there was ARPA money that, that is really relating to ventilation and, and other things of that nature.
Okay, a lot of this would have been done with a workshop. I have attended some in the past and, where I don't talk, but I hear questions from council, and I hear you describe everything in a more casual atmosphere, where I hear the answers and everything else. This was hard to do. It was hard for a layman to look at your budget and try to come up with a question. It only came out, what, two days ago? And for me to be able to go through it. That's why some of my questions might sound stupid, because I don't do this.
No, no stupid questions, but, but this, this budget wasn't much different from the previous budget. In fact, you know, our, our personnel was pretty much the same, except for what we highlighted on the, on the, you know, the, the personnel increases within, within the staff report. It, the fact that these are recurring, right, and the operations is, is not going to change that much from year to year. So whether I sit and line item everything out, I, I would be reiterating last year's budget in this year's budget, in essence, except for the highlights of the items that are capital in nature or one-time in nature, which we, we, we highlighted those outside of that. So I, in my opinion, I, I, I think that those items were, were, were highlighted, and I welcome any question about those highlight items, but is, in terms of just the overall structure of this budget, it has, it really is kind of a, a two-year type of operating budget. We don't, there's, there hasn't been a massive fluctuation between, between the two years, except for the areas that, that we, we identified and stated within the, within the presentation.
Okay, I don't think I have any other questions, but if I do later.
Yeah.
Do I just call you back?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to do that, but I'm trying to understand all this. I appreciate that I got more than five minutes, and I appreciate that you answered the questions that I have had. Thank you.
I just want to clarify a couple of things, questions on the shelter. So the $1 million has been in the city's funds for a while, hasn't it?
Yeah, it's, it, it has taken a while to find the, the cost benefit of, of different vendors, so to speak, of, of, of the modulars. So we've pivoted a few times, but up now we are on the right path to have, have it, you know, completed in this next fiscal year.
Does that mean you've chosen a vendor?
Yes, well.
Yeah, we have a, a list of on-call engineering firm that we have selected. So originally, we have gone out for a proposal for a, a design engineer and architectures to come and help support with the animal shelter projects. However, the cost component of the design alone was enormous, was a huge component of that, is actually more than 20% of what we have budgeted. However, what we have realized is that there is a lot of experts also from a civil engineering designs idea to, to take a look at the site review of the plant, as well as we ourselves have to look at both capital and operations to where it has to tie together, because doesn't matter what we built, we have to be able to operationally support it, right? So we are kind of taking that conservative approach to look at both, to where right now we're looking at a modular unit, that would make sense, not like the one we have now, but, uh, ones that would be expanded in capacity, as well as to look at both, taking care of the animal, to take care of the new staff that we just added in this budget.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so it's a lockstep process where we're, we're gearing up for the purpose of, of finishing the animal shelter itself and to be able to. for the purpose of finishing the animal shelter itself and to be able to operate it. So, and we have to fund those two, well, we're funding those two positions so that we can operate that.
Have you, do you know when the shelter will begin to be built?
We are still working with our vendor. The mobile modular units unfortunately currently are about 12 months out from the date of issuing the order because this is not a typical unit where we buy a construction trailer, bring it outside. This is a custom unit that makes specifically for taking care of animal shelter that would have proper drainage as well as air conditioning and ventilation because there's going to be animals going to be in there with people's attendance and also people coming to adopt the animal. So as we come up with a concept plan with all of those, we have reached out to a couple modular unit vendor that can customize those building for us. And right now, we're looking at at least about 12 months from the date of order, so.
And just to heads up, we have to ask questions about the budget. We can't talk about building something before we approve.
That's fine.
Even having money for it.
I just want to, did you say you have contracted with a company or you have not?
With a design company, yes.
With a design company, not a modular company?
That's correct.
Okay, just curious. Has any of that money been spent yet, that one million dollars? Or is it still intact, one million dollars?
It's budgeted for the next year, so.
Okay, I just, in the paperwork, I saw something that showed seventy-three thousand dollars, and it's hard to read. I'm not an expert at reading the way the budget is lined up, but I kind of wondered if maybe part of it had been spent.
We are planning on building this, and we're budgeting for it, yeah.
But it's all intact?
Yeah, it's there.
Okay, okay, good. That's great. Is there a way to find out the breakdown of how you're planning to spend that one million dollars? Is there some sort of way that kind of doesn't include it and lump it all in with the other categories, like the police department and all of that? Is there a way to just see?
I think the budget has to be approved first before they can do the line item expenditure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good, that's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have some questions in regards to the shelter. There's three sections, so I'll just start first. Under general fund, you have the animal spay neuter fees. I'm curious, the true definition of that and how that shifted down from many thousand dollars per year to three hundred and fifty dollars? What does that represent?
Are you talking about the revenue side of this? Or the expenditure side of this?
It is under the revenue.
I just don't feel comfortable budgeting off of a number that is, that fluctuates so severely. So I reduced, when I started looking at this from a discretionary standpoint, I eliminated a lot of revenues that I thought that I couldn't be positive that we were going to receive those.
Right, so what's the definition of the animal spay neuter fee?
I, sorry, I don't know that question.
So how can we, I'm just curious, how can we determine whether those funds are correct or moving forward accurately? If we don't know the definition?
Again, the budget is more predicated on expenditures, on appropriations. So if I see, if I don't see that revenue in this year, and I see or I can't increase that, and there hasn't been a council action to increase those fees, I'm not going to put those fees in and obligate the city to spend those fees. So a lot of the structural appropriations of this is predicated on general taxes, not fees for services. I'm not understanding your question.
Because the budget item has been consistent year over year for the last several years. It's R02322-065. I'll go ahead and move on to my next question, so if you come up with that. Under the police code enforcement, we have a couple different line items here under expenditures. One is the spay neuter program on page sixty-four. Another spay neuter under page sixty-four. And veterinary services on page sixty-three. The spay neuter grant that we received from California For All Animals for fifty thousand dollars is restricted specifically to spay neuter only. It's not usable for any other type of medical services. So I'm curious, on the budget here, and again, these descriptions are similar, but we have an adopted fifty thousand, estimated twenty, and then in 2024, they're requested of thirty. But yet, right under that, we have veterinary services, which our annual expense budget has been about a thousand dollars, and it's now showing twenty thousand dollars. So I'm trying to understand how we're breaking out that fund money? It sounds like we have it under two items?
Yeah, that's what she was saying, that it can only be used for that. So it's in a restricted fund, isn't it? Yeah, we put it in a restricted-use fund, and we're only expending that grant for that purpose.
Okay, and the grant is usable for two calendar or fiscal years?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And so the twenty thousand dollars under veterinary services, that is just a give from the city, so to speak, to put under?
It would be over the amount of the grant.
Non-spay neuter services. Okay, very good, thank you. That really clarifies that. I think ultimately, and it was kind of brought up here a couple of times, having, because there's so much change and momentum with the shelter right now, we do have, you know, a nice sizable budget for the building design in consideration of the Animal Commission Committee. I think it would be really valuable to have, after the budget's passed, having a line item of shelter expenses, and so we can really see where the money is. I mean, because there's things like vaccinations and supplies. I don't know where those kind of things are buried. So, okay, thank you.
That's George downtown. Just a quick question. We've heard a lot about the animal shelter. My general question, you know, may I like to be uptown. There has been some strides currently with the animal shelter, certain bullet points. Sometime after you guys have your questions, because it's a long night, for the sake of individuals that have written in and everything, if the city manager, if you could maybe tell us some current bullet points that were been changed in the animal shelter, that would be cool to hear the bullet points. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else for the public forum? No? All right. Do we have any write-in comments for this section? No, no comments. All right, so I will close the public forum. Or I'm sorry, close the hearing, and move into questions and discussion from council. Have any questions? Councilmember Lewis, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. On the summary that was on our desktop today and what you went through, on page thirteen, it gives the salary schedule changes for the various employment groups, some that were approved back in, I believe it was either October or November. But there was also a salary adjustment done on February first for our economic, Community Economic Development Director and our HR Director, but the percentages are not listed.
The percentages were not listed because it was the same as what was directed in closed session and brought forth during that council meeting.
So are you saying that you can't list the percentages on this report?
I could, but.
Well, that's what I was asking. I realize that we approved them in closed session. I don't recall if we brought them forward out, but that was February. I don't remember what happened then. So I was hoping you can give that information.
The information is that the guidance I got during closed session is what I included with this salary schedule. That's, that's.
Okay. On here, you've given a percentage for everyone that's listed on this page, but it is, there's nothing listed on this.
Because that was new. This, that, the percentages for that one salary range was, that's due to this. Whereas the other one was, I got direction back in, before February, it was brought to council on February first, and it was, it's now being brought back again in this budget for that same amount. No changes, no.
So what are the percentages?
I'm not positive that those percentages were, I believe it's about 5% for the HR Director, and it was more. But I believe the direction was that it would be in line with the Finance Department, Finance Director. That was, that was the, that was the staff report that was brought at that council meeting, and that's what we put on this salary schedule.
Okay, well, I, my opinion, I think it's remiss that we're leaving the percentages off for these two positions. The others, the percentages are listed here. They were approved back in 2022. So I don't know why this is a hidden matter for those two.
I don't think it's a hidden matter because we voted on it in February.
It is, because I asked for it, it's not listed here. Everybody else's is listed, and these two employees do not have their percentages listed. And I'm feeling like there's some resistance here to say what those percentages for their raises will be.
I can calculate what that percentage is, but.
Well, it should have been in the report.
Thirty-six point nine? So five for the HR Director and thirty-six point nine for the Community Economic Development Director.
Okay, thank you. For the street improvements on page eight, the six point two million dollars, you said that that was an aggressive amount. And I guess maybe I'll direct this question to you and to our Public Works Director. We just had a presentation given to us. I can't remember if it was the last meeting. It was the last meeting, but it was old information as a placeholder. So is this going to be enough to take care of what was on that list and any other streets that are in much more deplorable condition in order to repair them?
So those six point two million dollars is just what we have accrued to date with both SB1, Measure V, and our gas taxes. The future, in term of what we need in the future, that will be presented to you on July 5th because there will be a request for consideration for an additional funding and also a different scenario for council to consider. That would be part of my state of the street for July meeting.
Okay. I think those are my only questions on this summary. Just in general, for our general fund, it looks like we have a shortfall of a little bit over two million dollars. And so that brings some reservations to me. But those are all my questions for now.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Lambert.
So I'm not going to ask any questions. Mr., I believe you explained this very well. I'm not a finance type of director, but I understand you on everything you actually said. I've been with this council now for two years, and ninety-eight percent of this was what this city needed at least five, 10 years ago to start working towards this, that we're finally coming about to take care of it. And the last part were the physical impact. You know, we passed a resolution back to where we maintain 30%. And you're seeing here that we're still going to be able to maintain that 30%.
By a considerable margin.
Exactly, so why sit on the money when we need to put our, okay. Basically, we're bringing our infrastructure back up to our times now to help our city out. You know, that's exactly what we're doing. Now, there's no, we're top-heavy? No, we're not top-heavy. You know, we're bringing our city up to time. We got to get things done. And if we just, if we take all this out, where are we going to go? Are we going to sit on our money? Job well done, Mr. Coon. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, well, I guess I'll go. I have a little bit of experience in private finance. This is one giant cash flow sheet in P and L, in my opinion.
Yeah, for sure.
And again, I just want people to understand that in government finance, you know, in our personal lives, right? We have checking and savings, and you go to pay a bill, and you pull it out of your checking, you pay the bill, and you know if you're in the red or green or not. Or government, we have, you know, 15 different checking accounts, and sometimes we got to pull 10 bucks out of each one in order to go grocery shopping because that's what the law states. And so I know there's some kind of, you know, just kind of educating people on kind of how that works. As far as, you know, my kind of consideration, reviewing this budget, looking at this, this is my first go-around doing this. And first, I want to say, thank our city manager because I communicated with him about some needs and some items that I thought were pretty glaring to me. As a taxpayer, I want you to spend my money to fix my city. I want you to fix my roads. I want to have a better animal shelter. I want, you know, things like that. And so I don't want you to have a giant savings account. I want me personally to have a giant savings account, but I don't want us as a government entity. So I believe in program funds. That funds should be programmed to benefit the city, and that's what people want to pay their taxes for. So I applaud you because that's all I see in this. As far as, you know, the opinion that we're being top-heavy, well, last year, I remember, we didn't have a fire chief. And I remember the only department within the city, in my opinion, that had their act together was the police department because there was a section plan in place with being a chief and having commanders. And that department was structured in the sense that if one person went down, the other person would step up. And I saw the other departments were extremely deficient in that, especially Public Works and our fire department. And so to create a battalion chief position, assistant public works director, and I might want to remind everybody, for 26 days, we didn't have a city manager. So it would have been nice to not violate charter and violate our own policy and have a person in place when that happened. So to create an assistant city manager position is a no-brainer for me. And so I also want to applaud you. You created 20 jobs, which is pretty fantastic because now we're giving people, you know, 20 salaries to go out and help fix our city. So I'm not going to, I'll get off my soapbox for that, but again, I applaud you on this budget. At that point, do we have a motion?
I had no more questions, but I do have a comment.
Okay.
And that is, as a council member who's sat up here for pretty close to almost 11 years now, this is the first time that I've never had the opportunity to have a budget workshop, to be able to ask some of the hard questions about what was going on. To have this delivered to me, it's like, you know, we heard a lot about the animal shelter, but there's 302 pages in this whole budget and a lot of questions that I would have liked to ask our financial director and our department heads about what's in the budget and their satisfaction and so on and so on. So I'm at a quandary. And it's not that I disapprove of budget or things that are happening within the budget, but as a legislator, I think that I'm due the proper time to evaluate this and to ask questions and to have the public here as we casually go over a budget hearing. Our school districts had their budget hearing before they passed their budget. Our legislators in Sacramento have their budget hearings before they pass their budgets. Every city council have budget hearings before they pass their budgets. The airboard that I sit on, we have our budget hearings before we pass the budget. So this is an unusual step here, to have something given to you within 72 hours and expect you to regurgitate it and not be able to talk to staff about it. So I really needed to pass that on to you about my concerns, and I hope in the future that we will go back to having our budget hearings so that all the questions can be asked that need to be asked of our legislators and of staff about what is in the budget. So that's my statement, and I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
All right, and I'll just remind the public that as a council member, I can reach out to staff anytime. I don't have to do it from this seat. My phone works, I can reach out and call and send emails, and I know that people will respond to me in a timely fashion. And as, you know, as far as the budget hearing, I mean, I believe that's what we're doing tonight. And I think our citizens have been waiting for us to fix things for a very long time, rather than sit around and talk about it and have a meeting to have another meeting to have another meeting. I think we want things fixed, and so that's kind of my opinion. Does your email or phone not work? I don't know. All right, so do I have a? All right, so do I have a, a motion? Counsel?
I don't know if you even called on me yet. I'm just going. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 6656 as submitted by staff. 57. 6657, as submitted by staff. And I was looking right at it too.
All right, Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
All right. Do we want to do a roll call vote or? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Lambert?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. And, and thank you for that. Pushing more buttons over here. All right, so let's move on to item 11, advisement of public notices. We have, I believe we have three reports.
All right. The first public hearing notice is for a mobile food vendor, Pedro Sanchez, doing business as Los Cornales. They will be located at 826 West Pacheco Boulevard. The next is a site plan review for RF Auto Sales to be located at 702 G Street. And the last item is another site plan review for Truck Service Facility that will be located on Technology Drive. This is an exciting project as we're seeing some movement in our industrial park. These three public hearings will be held on Wednesday, June 28th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. And now we'll go to item 12, our city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I just want to say thank you to the entire team that has worked on this budget. Thank you, all of you, for all the hard work that we've done. I really appreciate it. As you folks will know, we've put in a lot of time, effort, and energy in getting this done and so thank you so much. I really appreciate it to all of you folks and, and all the hard work. And to the citizens, I know us as a team are extremely eager and excited to get to work and getting stuff happen. I will tell you that I've already, the team and I, we've already been teeing up a lot of items, so that way, as the budget gets approved, we're just ready to go and we're a step ahead of the game. So we're really excited about all that stuff and do know we're being very ambitious with things, but that's just what we like to do and we want to continue to work hard for you folks and for you citizens. So thank you once again, team, for all the hard work. And council, thank you once again for your continued support to allow us to give on back to the community of what they expect of us.
All right, thank you. Move on to item 13, report update, Merced County Association of Governments, Peninsula Clean Energy, Measure V Committee, and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Los Banas Downtown Property and Business Improvement. And so we'll start with Councilmember Lewis on the San Joaquin Valley.
Thank you. As another reminder, this coming Saturday, June the 24th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Merced County Fair on Martin Luther King Boulevard, there will be a free smog repair event. And this is to help people who have trouble passing their vehicles for smog and registration and a maximum of $500 will be granted by the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District to help those cars pass. For more information on that, you could go to www valleyscan, C-A-N, dot org. Also, the air district has also received another round of grant. We had a, what might be called an experimental grant to help people who are income restricted to get a HEPA filter for their home. And there were quite a few, the first round of monies that we received, it all disappeared very quickly. And we've recently received the second round of over $100,000 from the state of California. That money is divided up based on income and population within your county. At our meeting Thursday, I think there were about 60-some left for Merced County. So they go very quickly. But I'm, I'm sure there'll be another round of money coming. And to submit an application, you could go to valleyair.org/roompurifier. And these HEPA filters are, you know, the state of the art. They're not meant to do a whole house, but if you're in a situation where you're around a lot of chemicals for farming or air that has been polluted by fires, they suggest that you get into a room that's well sealed and that the windows are well sealed and it should take care, take care of that room. I think it's about 900 square feet. So there are many other grants that are online through the air board, so just go to their website at, again, www-air.org and you will find funds that are available there for different projects and different things that help people with their health in, in our county and in the San Joaquin Valley. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll give you an update on MCAG. Just a couple of quick things. At the last MCAG meeting, I, I was elected to the position of vice chair. We're all serve as vice chair for the, the upcoming fiscal year beginning in July. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to have that opportunity. Also, this summer, I know kids are out for the summer. Yosemite National Park is a really awesome place to take our families. If you guys go to mcagov.org, that's the MCG website, you can look up something called Yarts. And if, if you're willing to drive at least to Merced, Yarts will give you a free ride to Yosemite National Park the rest of the way and they'll bring you back. And so it's a really great program for families that take advantage of. It's the, it's the Yarts program. So that's the, that's my update for MCAG. Do we have anything on the? All right, thank you. And now we'll move into item 14, the city council member reports. We'll start with Councilmember Lewis.
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to personally thank, you know, all the department heads, Joe, Kim, Chief, Mr. Thanh, Mr. Coon, Stacy. You know, we, we put a lot, we rely on you guys' numbers quite a bit. I appreciate the, the info that you gave us tonight. I, if I had questions, I had questions. I called who I needed to call, got the answers that I needed. And, you know, I appreciate it. You know, this is a step forward for our city going in the right direction. It, it may not happen, it's not going to happen overnight, but you'll start seeing things happen now that we pass this tonight, starting tomorrow. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
No report, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for their hard work on the budget. A lot of, I know a lot of time went into that and bringing great presentation for the budget hearing that we had tonight. So that is all. Thank you.
All right. And I guess I'll go last. I just want to echo what other council members have said. I got to read 533 pages of, of things with numbers and the first thing I thought was, man, somebody wrote this. Not only am I reading it, but somebody wrote it. So again, thank you for that, taking the time, effort, and energy to put that all together. You know, the next thing is as far as, you know, our, our city manager and Joe and Neuron, I hope you're ready because I'm going to be your biggest cheerleader because we got a lot of work to do and especially, you know, things like amenities and the animal shelter and pickleball and, and the streets. And so again, I, I will, I will be forever in your corner. One of the, you know, things that we heard tonight regarding the, the homeless, again, and, and we don't have a perfect solution. We made another strive forward today in, in talking with our city manager. I've learned that since my time in office that we've done permanent housing for 32 of our homeless people, three of us last week, and they were actually reunited with families, some out of state. And so we're, we're glad for those accomplishments by that, that department that's doing that. As far as when we talk about mental health and things like this, yes, you can come to city council meetings and yes, we will all take it in the chin and, and listen to you. I know I will regarding the homeless. But also remember that the next time you're in a ballot box and when you vote to pass things like proposition 47 that stop drugs from being, people held accountable for, for drug actions and felonies turned into misdemeanors and people able to shoplift, just please remember that when you're in the ballot box, the consequences that go along with that. If we had drug court, we probably wouldn't have half of the issues that we have with the homeless. And that's, again, just my opinion. But with that being said, and, and again, I want to thank everyone in the public for, for spending a few hours with us tonight. And again, that's, that's what we're here for. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Second? Councilmember Lambert? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Meeting adjourned, 9:14.